I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, good evening. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mayor Melanazo.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Ms. Laraba.
Here.
Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. Moving on with the agenda, we do not have any special orders of business during the summer, so move right into the minutes. First order would be to approve the public budget hearing minutes of May 27th. Chair recognizes Ms. Laraba.
Sorry, I just wanted to point out that on page 30, for Speaker number 48, the last name is spelled incorrectly. It's Rojas, R-O-J-A-S. And Speaker 49, I know that is not the correct last name, but unfortunately, I don't have it at the top of my head, but I can get it for you and give to you.
Thank you. They didn't sign in, like I said, so I don't, I'm just guessing.
Any other comments on the minutes? We need a motion to approve the minutes as amended by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Laraba. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the vote. Next item, the public budget hearing minutes of the June 1st, 2010 meeting. Motion by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Conway. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, of the minutes as presented, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, the vote. And the last item under minutes, the regular school committee meeting of June 16th. Motion by Ms. Laraba, second by Mr. Leahy. Any comments on the minutes? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, the vote. The chair would like to recognize our recording secretary for doing such a wonderful job on the three sets of minutes. It was, there was a lot of work on her part, so thank you. Under permission to enter, the chair recognizes Superintendent Scott.
Thank you, Your Honor. North Reading Linfield Taxi, Inc., for the amount of $516,000 to amend the fourth year of the contract for regular education transportation of students involved in after-school activities and school trips, funding provided by various grants. SPNR Transportation of New Hampshire for the amount of $839,765 to amend the existing contract to provide for bus monitors per student's individual education plans and provide special education transportation for students involved in the special education summer school and after-school programs. Funded by the Special Education Transportation Budget and various grants. All American Sports Corporation for the amount of $15,528 to provide for the annual reconditioning of sports gear and helmets, 24-hour repair and service of equipment, and the purchase of new equipment and helmets. Funding provided by the School Department Lowell High School Athletics Budget. Merrimack Special Education Collaborative for the amount of $314,562 to provide for the Yoda District tuition costs for six students enrolled and receiving services as outlined in the Special Education IEP. Funding provided by the School Department Special Education Tuition Account. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ms. Laraba.
Through you to the superintendent, on the All American Sports Corporation, that's out in Ohio, are we sending this equipment out to Ohio, or is that just their corporate headquarters? I'm just trying to figure out if there would be something local that we could utilize.
Corporate, isn't it? Corporate headquarters it goes out to. It was bid.
Any other questions, comments? Motion to approve as presented by Ms. Dougherty, second by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Melanazo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Laraba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Thank you. Under memorials, we have six this evening. Rita LaRitch, mother of Deborah Kropowski, Lincoln School Literacy Specialist; Kevin Marsh, father of Melissa Marsh, Special Education Psychologist; Andrew Paquette, retired City Lowell Custodian; Tracy Repole Odom, daughter of Sandy Repole, retired Lowell High School Clerk; Esther Francisco, mother of Bailey School teacher Anna Kalupi, and wife of retired custodian Anthony Tony Francisco; and Catherine McCarthy, retired Central Office Clerk and mother of Riley School teacher Mary Ann McCarthy. Can we please raise, rise in a moment of silence in docking chambers?
Thanks, Senator. Thank you.
Do we have any unfinished business this evening? Hearing none. Public participation? Hearing none. Moving right on to the motions. First motion by Mr. Conway and Ms. Laraba to request the school committee to begin contract negotiations with Superintendent Scott. Chair recognizes Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, I think that we're in a situation at this particular point that we are negotiating contracts for a number of different unions and for our personnel to make sure that we have everything in place. And I think at this particular point, we should also take a look at the negotiating a contract for Superintendent Scott. I think what, I think what we should probably, if it's all right, Mr. Mayor, I think it might be a good idea to add something to this, if that's, if that's to amend something, perhaps to put a date, a specific date, because I realize that we only have one more meeting in September, excuse me, in the summer. And then, of course, we've got the opening of the school, and I think all our efforts and concentration needs to take place there to make sure that we have smooth openings throughout the entire district. So what I'm proposing at this point is to, is begin those negotiation talks at the beginning of the third week of September. And that way there, it'll give a couple weeks to settle in on the, in schools so that, you know, everyone is getting comfortable with the beginning of the school year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody object to the motion as amended to request the school committee to begin contract negotiations with Superintendent Scott beginning the third week of September Any other discussion in the motion? Ms. Laraba. Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate that my colleague has added a date. I'm not sure that it really gives us the amount of time with the really pressing issues that we face at hand. My concern is we really have priority issues in front of us. I don't know that everything will be settled by the third week in September. And this is in no way a reflection of my thoughts on the superintendent's work or my interest in renewing a contract with her, but the contract goes until the end of this upcoming school year. My sense is it's still, that's still early to say the third week in September, because I have such concerns about the budget issues that we face in front of us and what we're going to be dealing with in September. That would just be, I would prefer something that was in October even. Just, that's my thoughts.
Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. I don't know if the makers of the motion have an idea of what the kind of structure is that they want. This is the date that you're choosing, the date you'd want to have a public meeting? What, like, what are you anticipating happening? And I will also say, not to be too terribly psychic, but if we have another motion coming up about changing the evaluation mechanism, that would impact our ability to enter into contract negotiations.
Mr. Conway.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. I think, once again, I think both parties were talking about the, our attorneys, and I think superintendent's attorneys, perhaps at that particular week, and I'm just picking the third week of September, that the negotiations can start, or should start. And I think we also should keep in mind something, and we're well aware of it, has come up on this floor a number of times, and that is the fact that we do have a number of openings, superintendent's openings in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I believe 40 or 50 of them, and I think the projections are that this is going to take place for the next three years or so. And granted, there is no doubt about it, we do have a lot of pressing issues, but I'm confident, after working with this committee for the last three years, that we certainly can multitask, and I think that we can take on something on our plate that is extremely important, because as, as my colleague just mentioned here, we have a lot of pressing issues, and we have to make sure that our leadership is in place to help navigate these pressing issues. So that's why I'm suggesting, and I thought it would be a very straightforward, simple situation where all we have to do is just start that negotiation, period. Because again, I do believe that the superintendent has the option, I believe it's December, to let us know whether she wants to be here or not. So again, I think it's important that we let the superintendent know that we want to sit down and we want to discuss these issues with her and discuss the contract, and, and I think it might be, I think it's very, it's advantageous to both sides at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. I just have one question. As far as the, I guess, I don't know who it goes to. Would the superintendent still send the letter of intent before you negotiate, or do you just negotiate and then the letter of intent comes by the date in the contract? Does anybody have an answer for that?
I'll take a stab at it. I would think that if this motion passes, that prior to the third week of September, we'll probably receive a communication from the superintendent's attorney indicating that they'd like to begin negotiations with the school committee. I mean, I would think that that's probably what would happen, but again, I'm just a lay person, giving a best guess.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. And I do believe you're correct, that it does, the onus to begin the process does lay with the superintendent and her representation, so it would be a function that would need to happen from, from that perspective. The structure that we'd like to put in place to return to this issue, are you planning on doing this at our next meeting in September, at an open meeting, or are you planning on doing this in, are you going to try and craft some kind of executive session situation, which I don't think we can, but, I mean, I'm not getting a sense of, I don't believe attorneys are going to be involved in the conversation here on the floor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I think that the way you just explained it, I think is probably the proper, the proper way, where you have the attorneys contacting the city solicitor and figuring out the exact, you know, what, what particular day, when we're going to sit down and talk about this, because it is going to be an executive session. I would assume it would be an executive session. All negotiations that we've had so far, with contracts, are in, are in executive session.
Right. Again, based upon the new open meeting law, I mean, we do have to specify the subject matter in order to go into executive session. We do that at a public meeting and give the reasons why we're going into executive session. But I think Mr. Conway is correct in that we do have negotiation and/or collective bargaining sessions in executive session. So as long as we state the purpose, I think we'd be fine. And again, I would certainly defer to the city solicitor, but I think that's the proper Ms. Laraba.
Thank you. I just wanted to add my two cents, as it were. I joined Mr. Conway on this motion because realizing that in December, the superintendent could put in her letter and say that she is interested or not interested, I thought it would be in our best interest to start the process and let her know that we're interested in having her continue as our superintendent. I also was concerned that if we don't start the process, and I'm not saying we have to finish the process in September, October, December, but if we didn't start the process with all the other things that we are working on, that there is a possibility that it could be pushed to the end. And I really want to see us as a body try to address contracts before they expire. I want us to be working on those things with the, with the idea that we want a new one in place before the old one expires. I also, as Ms. Martin said, with being psychic, I had some concerns about other parts of the process, so I think it's a natural to just try to address all of these issues coming up. And to Ms. Dougherty's point, yes, we have a ton of important things. I'm not minimizing those, but I think this is something that, I think we're all in agreement that we're, based on the evaluations that we just gave the superintendent, that we're all on the same page about going forward, and that's something that we can just kind of sit down and put aside and get finished. Having said that, you know, it would still then be up to the superintendent to decide if she wants to continue with this band. So that's the reason I joined Mr. Conway in support of putting this motion forward. And I assumed, and that's my fault, I assumed that we would be discussing this as a group of what we wanted to see in the contract changed, what language we wanted to clarify, because there had been a couple of incidences where what one side thought was happening, the other side didn't want happening. So I assumed that there would be a conversation amongst the school committee members about the current contract and what we would like to clarify, and then have a meeting either with the superintendent or her representative about things that she would like to have clarified and work together to come up with a mutually agreed-on contract. So that's where I'm coming from with that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Leary.
So if we vote yes on this, we're going to have an executive session the third week in September?
Again, it would require a vote of the body.
Yeah. Well, assuming we vote, so I vote yes, we all vote yes. What am I voting on, I guess is my question, really?
Pardon me?
What am I voting on? I'm voting to have an executive session meeting.
You're voting to request the school committee to begin contract negotiations the third week, so I would assume that during that time period, at the regularly scheduled school committee meeting in public session, we would vote to go into executive session and start the process. I believe, unless, again...
Well, that's, I guess, that's, I guess, through you to the maker of the motion, I guess, what Ms. Martin had articulated, I mean, the motion's a decent motion, I have no problem with the motion. When we get down to specific target dates, what we normally do, or have done in the past, maybe that's not what we want to do, we go through the personal subcommittee, they set up a timeframe, correspondence comes from the superintendent saying, "I wish to continue as superintendent like it to open up negotiations." I don't have a problem voting yes, I just want to know what are we expected to do the third week of September? Are we expected to go into executive session? Are we expected to get a letter by the, are we asking the superintendent to give us a letter by the date if, if, it's bizarre having this conversation right in front of you, Madam Superintendent, sorry. Are we expecting a letter from her saying, "I want to continue negotiations by that timeframe"? And I don't mean to be flippant about it, but I don't want to sit here the third week of September and go into executive session and find out, "Well, wait a minute, we got to get a letter before we can go forward," or is there another step that I'm missing? And I apologize, but again, beginning negotiations is cool, but, and I'll vote yes on it, I just want to know what we're going to do with the third week.
Again, you bring up a good point. I would imagine that if the motion passes, that we will hear from the superintendent's attorney. Again, I could be a guess on my part, but, Ms. Laraba.
I'm trying to figure out how to ask this question. Wouldn't, wouldn't she still have till December to just to put in, to say that she would be interested or not interested? I mean, we're starting something on our part, wouldn't she still, by virtue of her contract, have till December? And my thought process would be that the third week of September, or whatever date we choose, that, that we start as a group to look at the contract and hash out some ideas, but certainly I don't see us having one meeting and finishing everything. And I don't know if maybe the smart thing would be to refer to the personnel subcommittee, but I think everybody would like to have some kind of input on the, on the contents of the contract. So I'm just, I'm throwing that out there as, you know, we're looking for direction in how we're handling it. I don't think Mr. Conway is intending that the third week of September, we'll go into executive session and say, "Okay, we're done," because I think there's going to be some conversation amongst all of us about looking at that contract.
Mr. Conway.
I mean, I do believe that, that obviously we can discuss it in executive session on, on our intent, and if there are any particular changes that we want to bring forward, and I'm sure that perhaps the superintendent and her attorney is also going to, might do the exact same thing. But again, all I'm saying on this here is that we start the process in the third, I mean, you can put it in any week you want. You know, I know that one of my colleagues said, you know, "In the summertime, it's too busy, we only have two meetings," and, and I took that into consideration. And I said to myself, "Well, why don't we wait?" And then I thought, "Well, why don't we wait until September, September 1st, first week of September?" And then I thought, and I said, "Well, perhaps that's not a good idea either, because it's the beginning of school, and I think that our staff needs to concentrate on opening those schools, because needless to say, there's a lot of work, there's a lot of tension, a lot of effort that has to be put in there in order to have these, in order to have a smooth opening." So if we keep on putting this off, then before you know it, we're going to be going up to, you know, November or December or whatever. So that's, all I'm saying is start this, start this process going. As far as the, the particulars, and again, Mr. Mayor, you know, you've been at this business a lot longer than I have, and I think that the way you just described it probably makes a lot, probably makes a lot of sense.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Conway.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the, Ms. Dougherty?
All right, thank you. Just one more comment. I want to be clear that my concerns about this timeframe have nothing to do with the superintendent's performance on the job or my intentions regarding renewing or extending another contract to her. It's not about that, but I think the contract calls for a December timeframe, and that's historically been in our contract for a reason. I don't understand, I have not heard yet, why we have to start the third week in September. What is the rush? I understand there are openings for superintendents across the state. There were two years ago as well, when we hired the superintendent. I mean, the market for superintendents, for principals, it's a very tight market right now. That has not changed. I don't see that as a compelling reason to rush to do this. We haven't even figured out what the process is that we want to do. We also have a motion, which I think has some merit on tonight's agenda, to look at our evaluation tool. These things, to me, seem to need to be fleshed out before we make some commitment to a date that we don't even amongst ourselves know what that's, what's going to happen the third week. Should the superintendent be then required to tell us the third week in September that she's interested in renewing or extending her contract, when her own contract gives her till December to make that decision? We don't know that. Are we going to have lawyers having a conversation? I believe this should be sent to the Personnel Subcommittee and discussed within the framework of the motion that's going to come up later this evening about how we, how are we going to look at our evaluation instrument and get some discussion going before we make a commitment to do, I don't know what, on the third week of September? And again, it's nothing to do with the work that the superintendent has done for us. It has to do with the structure that's in place that, you know, I believe we should start the process, absolutely, I agree. I don't want to wait till the 11th hour. I'm thinking October, November does not feel like the 11th hour to me. And then we'll have a better, everything should be in place with our schools, hopefully. We'll be in a better place with our negotiations, with our unions. I just think that there's so much on our plate right now, we need to focus on the priority balls. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to make a recommendation, could we perhaps look at, because I do agree with Ms. Dougherty that I think it would be, we're better served to have a bigger conversation if we're moving forward on a couple different fronts in terms of the evaluation and the contract negotiation. Would it be amenable to my colleagues if this were referred to the Personnel Subcommittee for initial conversations, and that we would put a date of, the Personnel Subcommittee would report by September, the, whatever that meeting is, in the third week in September, as to the negotiation strategy moving forward, in terms of timeline, not strategy?
Mr. Conway.
I think that, as I said before, I would rather see this dealt with in executive session instead of going into the Subcommittee on Personnel. I've been on the Subcommittee on Personnel, I think, for three years. I don't remember discussing negotiations in there.
That's not what we're going to be discussing.
Ms. Dougherty.
If I understood Ms. Martin's comment about the Personnel Subcommittee would lay out the structure and come up with a plan about how we would go forward, it would not actually be the negotiations. Did I misunderstand you? No, I thought we were just, because we have another motion that also needs to have a further discussion about the evaluation instrument. So I don't, I don't think that Ms. Martin was talking about beginning negotiations for the contract. It was beginning, having a conversation about how we were going to structure the contract, looking at other evaluation instruments, that whole step. And that would happen in September.
Mr. Conway.
Mr. Mayor, we can have a number of meetings in the Subcommittee on Personnel, and we can decide anything we want to decide in there, but the fact is, what we decide is only one side of the fence. We have to sit down and negotiate with the other side of the fence in order to come up with a product, a finished product. Again, I mean, it's up to the body what they want to do. I mean, I think that I was perfectly clear what I want to do with the motion. If they decide that's not what they want, that's, that's fine. It's up, it's up to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leary.
Just, this is something that should be a good thing, and we shouldn't be arguing over something that's a positive for the school system. I would implore my colleague to recognize that a good compromise would to have a brief discussion in Personnel Subcommittee and have that recommended and discussed before that third date would actually meet his, the deadline. It also would, at that point, allow for executive session to take place. This isn't going to end in one meeting. So I think the maker of the motion, the co-motion, my colleagues, you get essentially everything that you're looking for, and we can all support it in a positive way that's good for the entire school department. I think we need to relax. We don't need to have everything we want 110%. We need to compromise and work together on it. This is a good thing to talk about. We got a good superintendent. We shouldn't be fighting over something as silly as this. Going through the Personal Subcommittee in August, having a report out in September, line up some executive session dates, meet, have, go over the evaluation tool, which is a pretty important, it's one of the three things we actually do as school committee members. I don't want to sit here and vote no on something that we should all be voting yes on. Let's just compromise on it. I'd ask for the maker of the motion to amend it. I don't want to substitute his motion or her motion. I just want to have a compromise so we can all work together on something that we all pretty much agree on. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Laraba. Nope. Mr. Conway.
Mr. Mayor, and I agree with my colleague, this is, this is kind of silly to be arguing about this, and I think it's inappropriate, to be quite frank with you. Again, I thought it was a fairly simple motion. I had no idea that it would create this kind of controversy just to start negotiations. I thought it was very simple, straightforward. And if it's going to create, if it's going to create this type of disaster here that we've got here in front of us now, which I think is crazy, then I think that we have to go with the majority of the body, whatever, whatever they want to do. If they want to put it in the Subcommittee in Personnel, then, then fine. Let them put it in the Subcommittee in Personnel. I mean, I happen to not disagree with it. That doesn't mean that, that when we go into the Personnel, obviously, we're all going to work together to make sure that, that we do the very best job. So I think it's, if somebody wants to make that as a substitute motion, then, then that's fine with me.
Ms. Laraba.
I'd like to put in a substitute motion, that we refer to the Personnel Subcommittee to, what's the word I'm looking for, people? I'm sorry. Begin setting up the structure for the contract negotiations with a report to the body by the third week in September, at which time we can then decide how we'll move forward.
Second by Ms. Dougherty. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as substituted signify by saying aye. Opposed, the vote? Thank you. Next motion by Mr. Leary and Mr. Leahy, request the superintendent to develop a budget specific to each Lowell Public School as it relates to short-term sick leave costs. The budget would create an allocation of money specific for each school, which provides for the cost of substitute administrators, teachers, and other personnel. Mr. Leary.
Thank you, Mayor. This is what, part of the dialogue we had during the budget discussions revolved around, you know, how we spend our money and how we allocate it, and we had a lot of, you know, challenges that we met this year, and will have continued challenges going forward next year. In my previous life, one of the things that I did was budget insurance, you know, coverages, liability, medical mal. liability, medical mal, workers' compensation. And budgeting, you would go through each division within your company and allocate a certain percentage of what your dollar value would be for workers' comp costs, for example. It's similar to what we're looking for from a sick leave, a short-term sick leave budget. What it does essentially, it gives a tool for the principal at the location of the school, be it the high school, middle school, or elementary school, to really understand how much money they actually spent in dollar value in their school, so they have a tangible financial note of what's going on. The HR piece of it is, we're, we're obviously requesting our management to manage sick leave as, as efficiently as possible. But I think it's appropriate, it's done in every business that I've ever seen, or audited, or reviewed in my lifetime, that you have an allocation as a tool, along with the HR piece. Mr. Lang can easily allocate an appropriate amount for each school. It's not meant to be punitive. I think a lot of folks that I've talked to are like, well, you know, if you run over your account, especially in the first year, that means you didn't do a good job. Now, what, what I think that means is it's a discussion piece to see how we are working in managing these costs. It could very well be, as Mr. Lang pointed out during the budget time, we don't budget sufficiently enough monies for sick leave buyback. But this is a kind of a good tool to begin the process, to see, how are we looking at that? Can we do it better? If we can't do it better, maybe we're underfunding it. I think, Mr. Lang, if, that's what words as well say, well, we did underfund it, for the past two years. That's something we can't do any longer, but we should hold each operation not only accountable, at least understanding, being knowledgeable, of what their sick cost actually incur. One thing I wanna point, I wanna be clear, it's not to say if you got the flu, or a cold, or you're sick, you'd come to work. That's not it. What it is, is to acknowledge, we spend X, we spend a million dollars or more each year on short, uh, short-term sick accounts, substitutes, you know, administrators, what have you. We need to have our frontline administrators understanding what that dollar value is. It's a common practice in every industry out there that I can ever think of. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. Um, yeah, basically with this motion, we just wanna, you know, account for every dollar. We're not saying that we're skeptical, but, you know, in this economy, we need to know where every dollar's going. And I think putting on a school-level basis, maybe we might realize some more costs, maybe we won't. So, uh, that's all. I think it's a good motion, and see if it passes.
Thank you. Ms. Arty, then, Mr. Conway?
I'm sorry to be such a naysayer tonight, Your Honor. Maybe it's the heat getting to me. I understand my colleague's intention with this motion, and that is to try to curb our substitute teaching costs, to get our teachers to come to school. I get it. I do not think this is the way to do it. We track our attendance rates at every school. We have, we have reports every year. In fact, I would challenge anyone here on the committee, I'm sure the superintendent is aware, what school has the highest teacher absenteeism? The high school. We know that. We've been watching it for years. To put this onus now, and say, each school is gonna handle the financial piece, first of all, I think that our, our finance and operations staff has already been maxed out. As my, I don't have to remind my colleagues, we put HR under finance and operations, just this budget cycle, to save some money. To now say you're gonna break up this million dollar, and granted, it's huge, we're spending a million dollars a year on substitute teachers, we hate that, you know? But that's, money is there, because historically, that's what it's cost. But now to say to finance and operations, you're gonna break up this amount, allocate it, account for each school, I think it's a lot of extra work, not only for the finance and operations people who are already strapped, but also for our, our individual schools. I don't think the principals need to be focusing on that. They are aware what their absenteeism is. They know, when that annual report comes out, how that looks. They are, and I believe that any principal, any good principal, is trying to manage that issue. They don't need the dollars and cents in their face, they don't need that extra task. I, I just don't feel that it's gonna have the kind of result they're hoping to have, and I think it's gonna create a lot of extra work for our finance people and our principals, which really need to be focusing on other management issues. That's my concern with this motion. Thank you.
Mr. Conway, then, Mr. Leary?
I, I think the, taking a look at the, at the motion, and the authors, I think, had certainly, are taking a look at the cost, and trying to, trying to cut down, and, and trying to, trying to make things more effective financially. And, and I can certainly see that. The, there's a few questions that I, that pop up here, and that is, how much money is allocated to each school? Does it depend on the number of teachers? Would it depend on the number of students? Uh, I'm not sure how that would be done. I think that, needless to say, what happens if a school runs out of, runs out of money? What do we do with the substitute? What do we, how do we handle that? You know, last year, we were fortunate, we certainly had a scare of the, of the flu, and it didn't, it didn't really materialize in the negative way that we, that we thought it would. But what if it did? And also, you know, if people are sick, you know, they, they do need to stay home. And I think that anyone will tell you, and I don't care what walk of, of life we're in, whether it's in the medical field, in the business field, so forth, if someone's sick, they don't want that individual there. So I think that, you know, we have to be very careful with that. And I think my, my colleague, Ms. Doherty, I think is, has hit it on the head too, in the sense that, you know, we're, we've got a lot of work to do. We're really stretched out here, and I know that we've said this a number of times, we have had so many cuts take place. We don't have the same number of people doing these jobs. And, and I think we have to be very careful of adding on other responsibilities, when, when the bodies are not there to handle it, to tell you the truth. So I think that, I, I understand what the authors are saying of this motion, but I, I don't think it would be appropriate to, to, to vote this in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leary?
Um, let me begin from, like, an elementary level here, for, 'cause this is, I probably didn't explain it well. It shouldn't take more than four or five hours for Mr. Lang to put an allocation together. I'll do it for him for free. It doesn't take that much effort. It takes the history, past history of what that particular school, say the high school, occurred over time. You budget already a million dollars. The high school spends X amount of dollars, whatever that is. I don't think anybody in this room knows what that is right now. Maybe Mr. Lang does, 'cause he's the finance guy. But as far as overworking, this actually helps the finance department. It's another tool, so the principal can say, jeez, I get allocated, I don't know, half a million dollars for sick leave, and I already spent out 450, and we got two months to go. What happened? Did we have a flu outbreak? I mean, you have to, we have a contract where you have to fund this. No one says you're not underfunding it. Every normal industry has accountability for its managers. A financial tool is a good tool to say, hmm, we're either underfunding it because we have regular colds, regular flu outbreaks, we need to fund it better, or we're overfunding it in some areas. Maybe the Pine School, for example, doesn't need to have an allocation every year of $25,000. Maybe they can do 15. It's not complicated. Mr. Lang won't take six years to figure it out, won't take a lot of that stuff, he's already, they're already paying it. You're already budgeted a million dollars. You're already paying it. All you're doing now is saying, we're putting a little budget, a line item, to say, here's what your allocation is. And to look and to review after the first year in particular, to see how that worked. I, I don't, it's like almost, you know, I don't get it. Maybe I just, I come from Neptune or something. I just, this is so simple. It's not putting any extra, extra work on anybody.
Mr. Leahy, then, Ms. Laraba?
Thank you. I think what this does is it curbs, it's gonna curb and cut down on some costs at each school. You know, it's not, it's not, uh, I think we all know that there's abuse in the system. So basically, what we're hoping what this does, it brings more accountability to each school. We've all talked about it in the past, and I know that, you know, to bring up specifics, we wanna know, why does one school have more substitutes every day than another school? Why, for example, with the high school, they're the biggest school. Do they need an administrator substitute when somebody's out for one day or two days? I don't know. But do they automatically fill that? Maybe we don't have to. Same thing for teachers, parrots, custodians, clerks. And hopefully, this is gonna save money, and that's the objective. I would think that if it's managed at the school level, more than at Mr. Lang's office, it's less work for him. So I don't get the more work for the HR department. I would think it's less work because they're allocating it out. I mean, I've been no stranger to say that we spend way too much money on day-to-day substitutes. If there's a better way to do it, now's the time to find it out, because we're in such budget crisis here. So we're trying to save every single penny, if, I mean, all we're doing really is asking for a request here. If it comes back, we really can't do it, it's gonna be detrimental, then that's the way it is. And we wouldn't, wouldn't implicate, we wouldn't do this if it's gonna be bad for the system. But it's not, it's, doesn't hurt anything to try it, and to try to save money, and to try to curb our costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Laraba?
Thank you. Through you to the superintendent, or Mr. Lang, I just, if you could just explain to me what we currently do, in terms of tracking absenteeism, and are those substitute calls made at the school level? Are they made at the district level? My understanding is that we do have some kind of tracking in place, so I'm just wondering if we need to beef up that tracking, or, 'cause it kinda sounds like we're adding the finance, and I understand Mr. Leary's point about dollars and cents, but I'm not sure that, that at the school level, that's what they deal with. So I'm just trying to understand the current process.
Currently, the funds are all handled centrally, because the, the substitute caller is a central person. The substitute caller is a central person. So, the individual that calls in the subs for the various schools, you know, if people call in sick, we'll call in two to the Riley, two to the Maury, right across the board. Excuse me. And the funding for that, the salary count, is one salary count. We haven't gotten into in the past, individual schools looking at the money behind the subs, because they really can't control which subs get called into their buildings. And there's three tiers of substitutes, some cost 65, some 80, and some 100. And it really wouldn't be fair, just because I got placed at a school, you might pay me 100, as opposed to someone else you might pay 60. So what the principals have always worked on is just the actual percentages of daily absences. So they haven't looked at the money behind it, but they've looked at a particular teacher, percent of time that they're out of work. It's reviewed quarterly, and then semi-annually with the HR office. And that's when we would identify particular, say, individuals, or groups, or patents, and things like that, and work with the principal around the, the evaluation process, to take a look at that. But the principals just haven't looked at the, the finances. It's all been done through one centralized account. I certainly can allocate the, the million dollars, and I, I would look at a couple different ways of doing it. One, which just make, make the most sense, would be to take a look at the actual, just the FTE, employees of the different buildings, allocate out what their budget would be, based on that. That would probably be the fairest, and not taking into consideration students. And, again, I can track now, centrally, how much money is going to a particular school. But what might make better sense for reporting is to just use an average cost of a substitute teacher, and not really get into if someone costs 100, or someone costs 65, and just take a look at the average cost, break it up by building, based on just the total number of subs that get called to a particular school, for coverage purposes. It, to be honest with you, just, the, the financial piece, I think that the principals realize the, the monetary value of this, and it is something that we review with them time and time again. They've just always looked at it as a percent of time that the teachers are away from the classroom, and they really haven't looked at the dollars and cents behind it.
Ms. Laraba?
Just kind of a follow-up. So my understanding is we have the different levels based on the training or the degree that the substitute has. And, and from the, what I'm hearing, it sounds like the principals have been made aware that they need to track these absences, that they need to start addressing them, and, and have we seen movement on that, one. And the second thing is, kind of a, another important piece of this, which is not directly related with it, is just the quality of construction, instruction, construction, instruction that's going on, because in some places, to me, that would make a, a bigger splash, is to make sure that we're getting the person in there that's gonna be doing the job. I wouldn't have an issue with paying them more money if they were doing a better job. So, I guess that kinda goes part and parcel, too. If we're using somebody, there's a hundred dollars a day, and they're not doing anything, I'd rather have the, the $65 person, who is the go-getter. So I'm, I'm wondering if it's, if it's a, another plan, or, or a side plan to this, to really look at the quality of our substitutes and those costs. And, and that, I know that throws another wrench into the whole conversation, but those are just kinda the things that I'm...
Yeah, I think on the, on the pay scale, without, you know, looking at this, just off the top of my head, the hundred-dollar-a-day substitutes are your retired teachers. So generally, for the most part, they're retired teachers from Lowell, they have vast experience in the system. It is very valuable to have them in a classroom, as opposed to, say, a student who's in college, who's coming in at $65 a day to, to work. Certainly, there are times of the year, towards the end of the school year, or even different breaks and things like that, we'll take, you know, we have the need, based on either PD or workshops, things like that, where we need extra subs, so we'll take in extras. But we do try, whenever possible, to put the most qualified day-to-day subs in. And that's, again, why it wouldn't really be fair to penalize a particular school based on what sub went to their building, because the principal has no control over that. And I think with the, the principal looking less at the, well, certainly, it's a concern about the quality of the day-to-day substitute experience. They're looking at more, I think, the loss of having the regular classroom teacher in the building, and how that's affecting the curriculum and instruction. And, and they're very involved in the process, looking at this, tracking their own teacher attendance, and taking steps to obviously help curb that.
Follow-up, Ms. Laraba?
So, I guess my next question would be, would this additional tracking that we would then have the principals doing, take away from that time that they are spending trying to track the absentee? Because if they're already, if they're already tracking who's absent and out, and now we're, we're tacking a cost on it, just, is that a duplication of efforts?
It'd be, um, one more factor for them to look at. I mean, the reporting that they receive for the school level, let's say now, it has, you know, through the first 45 days, through the first quarter, you know, your teacher absenteeism rate is X. You have, on average, eight teachers out a day. I'm just gonna have to add a column to the report, that just now ties in with the average cost of the substitutes for that eight days is. Per day, times the 45, just so they can see that, you know, it's costing, say, $45,000 for the first quarter, or whatever it costs for the subs. But they're not, they're not gonna have the ability to really manage beyond that 45. I mean, there are contractual requirements, where teachers and employees can use, you know, X number of days a year, and it's built into their contract. You know, certainly, there are safeguards for us to help prevent people abusing the system after so many consecutive absences, verifying notes, things of that sort. But people have, up to whatever the amount of contractual days that's allowable in their contract, to utilize. And we can't fault them for that. If they go beyond that, you know, the conversation certainly happens, and it certainly happens up to that number, based on repeated absences, or, or, you know, any fluctuations in use of the time, that we think are not, not normal. But, the, the principals are gonna be at a loss, where, you know, and again, this would be a different discussion for the committee, if X school has a budget for the year of $50,000, and come February, they've spent their $50,000. They really don't have any recourse then, with the exception of just not calling subs into that school for the rest of the year, if they've spent their allocation. So as we get into the school year, the committee would have to work and talk about how you actually wanna deal with that, when a school exceeds their, their allocation of funds. And I'll, I'll say, just as another caution, just on that, the, just given the cuts that we've taken over the last couple of years, particularly this year, and at the elementary schools, some of the parrots that we've left off, those have been some positions that have provided some flexibility, in the event, and it happens every once in a while, where a sub doesn't come to a school, or report to a school, the school for a day or so, you know, can, can adjust to that. But if it becomes a long-term trend from February to June, you know, it's, it's certainly gonna affect the, the quality of instruction for the rest of the kids in the classroom.
Ms. Laraba?
Sorry. Through you to the makers of the motion, I guess what I just wanted to understand, are you looking to make this budget that they're held, that if they do have their $50,000 in February, is there some kind of action that's taken, that they've gone over? I, I guess that's the clarification that I'm looking for, sorry.
Mr. Leary?
Through you to the chair. No, that's an excellent question. I think it's pretty, I think you have to fund a substitute teacher. You cannot not fund it. What you have right now is a bucket of money that nobody other than Mr. Lang knows what school system spends what. No one has a clue. What this does is it puts a tool, a budget number, predicated on past history as well as FTE. It's a both look at. You put a budget in, and if they're exceeding it by February, there's got to be a reason for that. And that's when a discussion would be generated, what's going on while you're exceeding your budget in February? Was there a flu outbreak? Was, you know, something unusual? You're still going to have to fund it. Keep in mind, you budget a million dollars. If we go over the budget, Mr. Lang has to draw from other accounts to pay that. That's exactly what would happen. You can't not fund that area. What you're doing is a tool to be cognizant, to see if there's an abnormality. Or, you know, I guess you're looking at it in terms of, you know, why did we get a, I'm making examples here, but it's, my brain's not working in the heat here. You got, we call this sub for a vice principal for a day because they called in sick. Well, why'd you do that? You know, it's management. You got to come in the next day, and you got to work a few extra hours, like everybody else in the private sector, to figure out what happened that day. And that might be oversimplistic. But the bottom line, I guess, to answer your questions, you have to pay it. But this is a normal tool to basically track and have an identifier that we have costs associated with sick time. Got to pay it. Mr. Lang would tell you, and he's told us already every year, that we underfunded. So if we can find a tool to manage it better and get it below a million dollars, that's great. If we can't, at least we exhausted avenues. Here's one other tool that costs new more time of the principal, then looking down a line at him going, okay, I spent 45, I got another 45 to go, plus all the other HR functions that are normally happening. The allocation doesn't take, it is not an inordinate amount of his time. It's not a lot of his time. Again, I get the trouble because it's a new concept. It's not new, actually. It's new to education. It's not new to allocating losses. In fact, we get allocated, if you look at our budget, it's a city budget. We get allocated health costs. And if we go over it, what our budget is, we got to find money somewhere to pay it. It's kind of, that's kind of more of a broader example of it. So I'm being long-winded, but you're going to pay it no matter what, anyway. It's just an identifier saying, what's the anomaly? Is the anomaly because there was a flu outbreak or people were sick? Or is there something that's a management tool that we got to address at that particular location? That's all. And I guess if no one's to vote for it, that's cool, but this is used everywhere. And it's not meant to be punitive. It's meant to hopefully keep our costs out, because next year is going to be a beautiful, wonderful budget cut session. We'll be looking at things we never wanted to look at before. This might actually help us a little bit, or at least may not make it much more difficult. Thank you.
Mr. Conway?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Lang. You have the information from last year on how much money has been spent on substitutes for each school. Is that correct?
Yes, it's not together on one document, but I have the information to pull together.
So you already have that information in front of you? You know now whether School A has spent $10,000 a year on substitutes and School B has spent $20,000. Is that correct?
Yeah, I could tell you that.
So, I mean, I understand what the maker of the motions are saying, but I see, I don't necessarily see how this, whether it's done in other industries or not, I'm just saying, I think we already have that information at our fingertips, and I don't see why we're basically duplicating it at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Leary, then, Mr. Leahy.
Just, I mean, we have, Mr. Lang has the information. He's very competent. He does a great job. The principals don't know what the cost is. You don't know what the cost is. I don't know what the cost is per school. It's absurd to tell a manager, you're accountable for your school, and you don't know how the financiers are running in your school. It's just absurd. I can't, I apologize for, maybe I should just go take a walk and come back, because it's just absurd, the question. I just, nobody, I don't know. I can't tell you what the high school paid out. I have no idea. Mr. Lang, we have to dig through information to look at. It's an account we pay a million dollars on. I don't know if it can be any better. Maybe it can't. Maybe it's way underfunded, and we got to reallocate more money. Maybe we're doing everything we can do. It's not that big a deal. It's not that much effort. It's just one line item, one column in a whole spreadsheet.
Mr. Leahy?
Again, this is just another accountability situation. If you don't have to, I mean, this is just an open account. So if these, if our employees have to come in every day and face a person, hopefully, it's going to save money. I mean, it's a lot of money we spend every year. And I only use the high school because it's the biggest school. But if we all sit here and say that there isn't any abuse at the high school, then we're only fooling ourselves. This mechanism, how it would work at the high school, is instead of calling 25 people a day, now it's holding the headmaster more accountable. And that's the whole idea of this. So either you vote for it or you don't, doesn't matter. It's an effort to try to curb costs, and that's all it is.
Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I hear some very important stuff on this side of the room that I think we can move with that doesn't necessarily mean giving each school its own budget for substitute teachers. I think this idea of providing principals with the cost, information on the cost and a running tally of how much they spent, I'm fine with that. That makes absolute sense. And when we look at the trends, as we do every year, of absenteeism, and we look at the schools that have higher rates of absenteeism, we should have a number attributed to that as well. Why not? The part I have an issue with is the idea of giving a principal, here's your pot of money based on historic whatever, and then if you run out, you got to come to Central and beg for more money or figure out where, that, to me, seems inefficient, especially given the fact that those principals have no say in whether they get a $65 sub or a $100 sub, because it's managed at Central Office, because economiescales make sense that these things are managed district-wide. As I would think our purchasing is managed district-wide, too. A school will order how much paper they want, but we would buy the paper, I'm hoping, we do, as in a bulk for the district. You have district contracts. So my disagreement with my colleagues is not in this idea of having money be part of the management tool. I absolutely get that. But I think most principals are looking at it, as Mr. Lang said, as a percentage of time out, as the quality of instruction that's not happening when you've got a teacher who's out consistently or incessantly or whatever. And that's where their focus really needs to be. But we should all be aware of that number as well. So I really have an issue with taking it out of the central kind of control, especially where the principals have no say in who they get sent as a substitute. So that's really where my concern is. And I think that we could incorporate some of these comments in terms of the dollar amount within, going forward, within the way we report our absenteeism rates quarterly and yearly, not only to the committee, but also how we report it to the principals. So, you know, and even throw in the number, this is what you spent last year, and this is how you're running? You know, we do that when we have our finance meetings, and we look at how much have we spent on salaries? We've allocated this much in the budget for that, and it's this time of year, what percentage of that? I mean, these are important tools. I absolutely hear what my colleagues are saying about that. But to take pieces of it and have the control be separated, I think is inefficient, and I think it will cause more work, both with the principals and with the finance and operations staff. So I can't support the motion. Thank you. But I do support some of that.
Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have similar concerns that Ms. Dougherty has. And I, and I think, you know, there's seven of us here, and we certainly can disagree on motions. The first motion, I thought was a good motion, and apparently, the majority of the people didn't, which was fine. We move on. Of course, taking into consideration that we have eight motions, and I think we're only up to number two. We could be here for a long time, I think, tonight. But I think there's nothing wrong with disagreeing with a motion, because I think that as we discuss the motion and discuss both sides, I think a lot comes out. And I think there is certainly a concern, what Mr. Leahy just said, that there are perhaps abuses. And I think that principals, and I think they're doing their job. I don't think there's any doubt about that. When they're taking a look at, and if they see that someone is out on Friday and Monday, and Friday and Monday, week after week, needless to say, they're definitely going to address that. But I think also, as Mr. Lang mentioned, we do have a contractual agreement of 15 days. And what does concern me is if Principal A runs out of money, you know, what are we going to do here? And again, it's not necessarily his fault because, and I know that he or she might feel that way, because, oh, my heavens, now I'm running out of money. What am I going to do at this particular point? So I think that, I think the idea is probably not a bad idea. I think that it certainly can, it certainly has sparked a discussion. And I think that what certainly has come out of this is the fact that we need to take a look at how much money we do spend in substitute. And if there's some way that we can curb that, then we should perhaps pursue it. But in this particular motion, I can't go along with it. But that, that just happens to be one person's opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I just want to make, through you to the superintendent or Mr. Lang, just to clarify, we, the school doesn't, the school does not have any control of who they get for a substitute?
No, the substitutes are assigned centrally from, there's an individual in our personnel office that calls the subs in each day. The schools certainly make recommendations as to day-to-day subs that work well in their schools, people that they would request come in. There's requests that are granted. But no, I mean, they're called in by that individual.
So who makes the common sense call that on a Friday afternoon, when it's a half-day, you don't send in a retired teacher for $100, you send in someone who's a qualified substitute for $65? Who controls that?
I'm not sure I know that.
Well, cost-wise, right? Do you, in the last week of school, do you really need qualified retired teachers at $100 a day? Or do you bring in students who are in school, trying to become teachers, that we would pay $65 a day? Who makes that call?
It's based on availability of individuals.
Okay.
If it were me, and I didn't make the call, but if it were me,
Right.
I would go with the most qualified person, day one or day 180.
All right, see, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call, I wouldn't bring someone in like that. But, I mean, that's why I'm trying to get to cutting costs. The person in school who's got a BA, and they're going for their masters, and they're trying to become a teacher and they're substitute teacher, would, in my opinion, be a good call to pay $65 a day to come into the school the last week of school versus my friend Mary that just retired, that I'm going to pay $100 to.
Right.
That's my point, all right? I don't care which way this goes tonight. The point is, we need to save money, and that's all this is trying to do.
Mr. Lang?
Just to respond to that, I mean, it honestly becomes a quality issue, all right? And you have, if your friend Mary, who retired, who is going to be there all year long and be a day-to-day sub and get to know the kids, know the faculty, have good classroom management skills, isn't going to need, you know, any setup when they get in there, for the extra $35, to me, it's worth it to have that person. As opposed to, we do get inundated at the end of the school year with kids who come home from college, say, the end of May through the end of June. We try to use them when we can, but I would still, you know, go with the retired teacher at the 100 over the college student for 65 who's trying to break in, if we have the availability and if they know that school, and if it's going to result in less, just classroom management issues, and also just better teaching, even though it's the last week of school. That's just my personal feeling.
Ms. Leary?
So I guess through you to Mr. Lang, so as we're closing schools and doing everything else next year, it'd be kind of cool to spend the most money for a couple of hours, I guess. You know what, I guess we should vote on it. We're going to lose the motion, but I tell you what, it was a good faith effort at trying to save some costs because next year is going to be a horror show. And it's done everywhere else, and Central Office still controls everything because they make the calls. And if someone doesn't have money, it'd be nice to know how much they actually spent. It'd be kind of a cool thing to know. But I guess we don't want to know that because that's different and someone else didn't think of the idea. Thank you.
Ms. Laraba?
Thank you. I think, I think the intent of what are the co-makers of this is a good one. I think, you know, as I'm sitting here listening to all the sides about it, you know, if we give them a budget and we're trying to hold that to them, then that means that we'd have to evaluate them on their success or failure, which then means that, if I understand it correctly, then it's part of a contract issue with these administrators. I like the idea of giving them a dollar number. I'm wondering if we could tweak the motion to say that at Central, you develop the budget so that you know who's supposed to be doing what, and you can convey that information to the principals. I think the, and then they have, then they have that monetary tool, and they know six months in, geez, according to Central, my budget is, and we've gone over it, and what can I do to fix that through? Is that something?
I'd be agreeable to that. I think it's a fantastic compromise.
So can I make that as a motion?
Why don't you word that again, too?
All right.
I actually thought I heard that we do that already, but, you know, if you want to continue the discussion...
I don't think, am I correct? We do that, but we don't give them the dollar figure? We give them the percentage?
Yeah, they receive the reports. It's just not tied to funding. They just see the actual teacher absences and a percent of teacher time out of the building.
Right.
I can add a column that just shows them the amount of money that that is equal to.
Right.
I mean, that's fine.
That's, that's, that, I think, still gives them the full force of, oh, my goodness, this is how much money it costs. Because what they're seeing right now is either a percentage or anything else. And I think what our co-makers are trying to impress upon people is that that actually translates to real dollars and cents. So I think if the central administration can, in their own mind, figure out, okay, based on history or whatever, each one should be, and here's a dollar number, just so that the principal knows that, I think we would run into some issues if we're saying to them, you have to manage that budget part. But I think if we give them the dollar figure, then the impact of how much money is being spent can be seen. And I think that is really what the gist of your motion is. You want the principals, the on-the-line people, to understand how much money is going into this and have them, and have that incentive to try to work that much harder to control it. Is that, okay. So would that be a substitute motion or an amended?
Substitute motion.
All right, do I need to say it again? Just include in the information that Central gives the schools, the monetary, the average, because you're using an average dollar cost, is that correct, Mr. Lang? To give them the, based on the averages, the amount of money that is attached to that?
Is there a second?
Well, actually, I think the superintendent had a question.
Oh.
Can she ask the question?
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. So if the report does include a financial figure, I think it is important, and it has been discussed here tonight, to note that presently, the principals are responsible to ensure, as it is district office, that all of the contractual obligations around how many sick days somebody takes are being complied with. So all of the variables that our principals can control are dictated by the contract you've negotiated. So the teacher, the, when the teachers are out, if there's an abuse, it's immediately brought to the principal's attention and then to HR's attention. So although I think there's no harm in putting a dollar figure attached to the report, as Mr. Lang has suggested, I just want to make sure that our principals don't feel, you know, in any way that they're responsible if the teachers are in compliance with how many days they take. One school may take 15 days, right, that they're out, for whatever reasons. I just want to say right now, we are in compliance with the tools that the committee has given us. So I just want to make sure that people don't feel blamed about, okay, well, you know, I didn't have any control over X and Y, but I'm being, whatever school is being said, okay, we're 20,000 over. You can't be 20,000 over, per se, based on the contract, or it's brought to people's attention, and you go on short-term leave, long-term leave. So I just want to make sure what we do with the information, although it's, I think, an easy fix, as Mr. Lang said, I just want to be cognizant of the fact that our administrators presently monitor and execute the substitute issue according to the contract you have in place.
Ms. Laraba?
I certainly understand that we have the contractual obligations, and they're allowed the 15 days, and they can take their 15 days. And I'm not trying to suggest that they should or shouldn't. If they need to use them, they need to use them. I think this is more a way to just make that little incentive of, you know, somebody's abusing it, you need to address it. And I say that only because sometimes in management, when you're dealing with 20,000 things and you've got many pots on the stove, something like that could possibly be pushed to the back because it's not as pressing as something else. And what we're trying... And what we're trying to say, and what I think they're trying to say, is that even though you may not think it's as pressing as A, B, and C, that little D that you keep pushing back and not addressing has a dollar value attached to it. And so that's just another incentive for them to, and I'm not trying to suggest that they don't follow up on that either. I'm just saying, it's another, it's another tool for them to see how that's affecting their spot.
We have a second on the substitute motion? Second by Ms. Dougherty? Any further discussion? Should we wait for Mr. Conway to come back? We'll wait a minute. It's been made and seconded. Roll call.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Melanazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Lariva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Seven years, substitute motion approved.
Next motion by Mr. Leary. And Mr. Leahy instruct the superintendent to provide an additional $125,000 to the Lowell High School athletic budget, and additional $25,000 to the Lowell High School Activities Club budget by deducting $150,000 from the short-term sick leave account. Mr. Leary, no, Mr. Leahy, excuse me.
Thank you. I'll just make this one short and sweet after the last one. As of this time, I wasn't able to make the meeting last night. There was some discussion on, discussion on the sports programs, but I don't have anything in my hand concrete, so I would like to, along with my colleague, make this motion that we just take some money, put it into the Athletic Department budget, so we can guarantee that we're gonna have some sort of decent sports program last year, and put some money into the clubs to hopefully try to salvage the activities in the clubs at the high school. That's the intent of the motion. After the discussion tonight, if the money doesn't wanna come out of the, if, as a body, we don't want the money to come out of the sick leave account, I don't care where it comes from, we could make a substitute motion, but the point of the motion is to, at this stage of the game, we're so late, where sports are gonna be starting next month, that we try to salvage some of our sports programs. And hopefully, that in the coming months, we're gonna really, we need to sit down now and have a frank discussion on what we're gonna do. Are we gonna implement fees? Are we gonna cut out some programs? Are we not gonna have programs in the middle school? Are we not gonna have freshman sports? Are we not gonna have intramural sports? I mean, we've had, in my personal opinion, we've had three months, we had two months, this came up at the last meeting, and I have nothing in writing in front of me, but a bunch of talk from both sides, and no agreement. So I'd like to put this to rest tonight, and make sure that we have some money in those, in those budgets. Thank you.
Before I do recognize Mr. Conway, as a courtesy to the co-maker of the motion, I'll recognize Mr. Leary.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna echo what my colleague said. I think the important part is, if we amend the motion, or substitute motion, matters not to me. If we take it from the charter school monies that we've just been allotted, that's fine. I think the point is that the negotiations that are underway are complex. They involve more than just salaries. They involve terms of contract. They involve, it involves a lot. In saying that, I have to acknowledge, you know, the charter school monies, we'll have a lot of later discussion on it, as it stands now, is only $263,000. So if we take 150 out of that number, if that number's even a real number, it's only 113 left in that account. So we are doing, we are moving with a risk. It's a risk that I'm willing to take. I know we have a long year ahead of us, we have long negotiations in every aspect of our contract, but I think it's something that our students deserve. It's something that a lot of students go to school to do. So we amend it from another account, substitute motion from another account, if Mr. Lang can make additional suggestions, I'll support it tonight. I think it needs to be done. I do need, the negotiations are ongoing, they are taking place, because there are issues that we need to have resolved, but they are complex. They're gonna take longer than a few weeks. So I support, my colleague and I did put this motion based on the substitute count. If that's not, if we don't have a comfort level with that, I'll go with the charter school monies, if Mr. Lang has other alternatives. By all means, I'll support it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that this, I think this is a good motion. There's no doubt in my mind that the sports program needs to be funded, and also the clubs, too. Because I think that it services a tremendous number of students that we have, and as I think we all agree with, that it's, it's perhaps one of the best, and I certainly have said it before, as someone that's been in the system for a number of years, I certainly have seen that, in my opinion, is one of the very best, if not the best, dropout prevention program that we have. And kids really gravitate to these clubs, and certainly to the sports. And as I said to someone the other night, I believe, at one of the meetings, I said, you know, quite often, we might not remember all our teachers, but somehow we remember our coaches, because they do have a tremendous amount of influence over us, and the, certainly the things that we have learned by playing these sports, too. So the only, you know, maybe it is the heat that's getting to all of us here, but the, where it says the sick, the short-term sick leave account, and we've just talked about that for quite a while, and I think that that's something, as we've said, needs to be funded, that's a line item. It's something that I'm sure that the superintendent and the staff has gone over that, from past practices, what kind of monies have been needed in order to, in order to fulfill that line item. And I do not feel comfortable at all taking it from that account, but as Mr. Leary said, that he would be comfortable if it came from another area. And the only area that I see at this particular point, that we could take it from monies that might be floating at this, at this particular time, and we were certainly hoping for a lot more monies, but from the charter school. And I'd like to make a substitute motion that, again, this is a great motion, but a substitute motion just to substitute that short-term sick leave account for the charter, the money from the charter school.
Substitute motion by Mr. Conway? Second by Mr. Leary? Any other discussion? Ms. Lariva, Ms. Martin, and Ms. Dougherty?
I guess there's a lot of conversation still to be had. No, no, Dave, nothing's gonna be easy. I guess a couple of questions. How did we arrive at the figure of 125 for the athletics and 25,000 activities to put back in? I have a concern about using the charter school money, because when we were in the middle of budgets, and we used the one-time funds as a plug, several members were very adamant that they did not agree with that movement, and the conversation was that, really, that's kind of a placeholder, and when the monies came in from charter school, we would put that back in to basically replace those one-time funds. Obviously, the money didn't come in, the amount of money that we didn't come in, as we expected, and you still have those, those same objections would still be there, that we used one-time funds to fill a hole in the budget. This is really kind of a replacement for those one-time funds, even though we get this kind of money every year. So I'm a little concerned with that, because it seems like we've done a turnaround. So I guess I'd like to know how we arrived at those, those specific numbers, and why it's okay to use that, that money that we were gonna replace the one-time funds with. And please understand, I certainly agree that we need to have the athletics and the activities. I think I'd be more comfortable if we had a presentation saying, you know what, to really get by, this is the amount of money we need, rather than just coming up with big numbers, because that money has to come from somewhere. And we've already had a huge conversation about the budget and the cuts that we've made throughout. So I'm not comfortable saying to the superintendent and her staff, find us another $150,000, because in my mind, we've already gone line by line, we've already looked at all of those, those parts. So I guess those are three concerns that I have, and I'm not sure if the makers of the motion have some kind of backup on how they arrived at those numbers, or what their thought process was in coming up with those numbers, but I'd like some information on that, if I could, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Leahy?
When we, when we thought the motion up, I guess we just kinda came up with a figure, because the first part was half of what the cut was from the Athletic Department, the 249, and just trying to ease into it and salvage what we can. I mean, it's really no magic formula for that. And again, you know, I have nothing in front of me that tells me what we need, and what we're cutting, and where we're getting it, and, so I'm just trying to do the best job I can as a committee person, because I know how important these sports are to these kids. I've gone to the, you know, I guess I gotta say for the record, my kids do the middle school sports. I don't care, all right? They do it, and it's very important. And when you show up, week to week, and you see what these kids get out of that, you can't put a price on that. So what we're trying to do is salvage this, because, I mean, it just seems like this year, with the budget, and it's not anybody's fault, but with the budget cuts we've come up with, and the suggestions, and the devastation we've done, we're just trying to restore some of it, and have a decent year next year. And that's where the numbers came from.
I want to recognize Mr. Leary.
And I want to thank, the question's a very good question. I think the first part of your question is, when three of us voted no on the $500,000, that's 'cause that is one-time money. This is Chapter 70 money, so it's reoccurring. However, you make good points. I think the reason we came up with 150,000 is we were literally looking at the sick leave cost, and finding a way we could do it that would be manageable. Because 150,000 would be manageable out of a million-dollar budget. It'd be tough, but it'd be manageable. We took the half of the, the sports budget, 125,000, 'cause it's half of it, it also would restore all the freshman programs, it would leave most of the programs in compliance, you'd have JV programs. They'd be massive cuts, but it'd be a figure where you could sustain and go forward. The club issue, not being as familiar with the clubs, the $25,000 would add some of the clubs back, there would be some additional issues, because of contractual issues that I found out last night, that I can't get into tonight. But it was in effort to keep these programs sustained. There's a number of folks, I'm sure all of us have phone calls from outside people that are willing to raise some funds, they can't raise an enormous amount of money to help out, but they can raise a little bit. But to answer your question, you're right. I, it's, it's a risk. It's not, I'm not happy making the risk. I wasn't happy voting for the cuts. I'm not happy that the charter school monies came at 263,000 instead of 1.5 million. I think all of us wanted to add, like, library media specialists, but I'm going on here. That's the methodology. It's not the best methodology, but it was based on the number-two motion, trying to find a way to fund it.
That answer the question?
I, I think that I would feel more comfortable with this motion if we had a conversation with the administration and the Athletic Director with what they could live with. I mean, he was given a number that said, you have to slash by. And one of the conversations that we had was that everybody has to share some burden on this. And I would just feel a little more comfortable if there was a little more method to that number. I agree with what you're trying to do. I was not happy at all with the cuts. It certainly affects my child as well, as a, as a part of the sports. I'm just having an issue getting my head around, just pulling a number out of the air. So I, I support the intent, but I would really like to have some conversation with, well, this is, you know, if we had 50,000 more, we could restore this, if we had, and I know that's more work, and I apologize, but I'm just not comfortable saying, take this X number from this part. So that's where I'm standing on this. I'm sorry.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I also agree that anything we can do to restore our, our clubs, and also the sports, just to belie my focus, is, needs to, needs to be done. And I, there's no question that, there's no member of this committee that wanted to make these cuts. I mean, these are the ones that, that really hurt, in a very profound way. In terms of looking at the number, I mean, in my mind, it, you know, we're looking at this $263,000 that came in from charter school funding. It is recurring funds, it is now going to go against our bottom line, and build, realistically, over the next few years, hopefully. But if we were looking at taking 50% of that, which puts us in that same, you know, basic range, and then have a more thoughtful conversation with the administration, and particularly with the administration at the high school, about how we can get the most out of that, my biggest concern was making kind of blanket cuts of, of, you know, all assistant, all assistant coaches, or all clubs with so few members, or things along those lines. I'd much rather have this be a thoughtful, well-considered process of, this is the amount we have to spend, not saying it's gonna happen, you know, that it's gonna be easy, but we're gonna need to, I think, put some thought into how we wanna see this work, and even if it is a matter of, we say, fall sports, fall clubs, go off, you know, as, as historically they've always functioned, and we recognize that we make our changes during the winter and the spring sports. I mean, and that's just, you know, kind of giving us that number, recognizing where we're taking it from, but allowing us a mechanism and a, and the space to make more well-considered decisions about what that money's actually gonna fund.
Thank you. Ms. Dougherty, and Mr. Conway?
You're okay with putting the money in first, and then figuring out how we spend it after? Is that, was that the gist of your?
For the most part, yeah. I mean, I think we're under a time crunch, but I think having a, you know, recognizing that we're putting the, we're adding this back into the budget at this point, recognizing that we need to see a better plan as to how it would be spent effectively.
Are you saying the 150 or 130? You said half of the?
The number is, I mean, it would be up to, I'm just picking, half the charter school money is just as arbitrary as, as the 150. They're right in the same area.
Okay. Thank you.
I just think this is so difficult. The earlier motion to take it out of the substitute, that absolutely wouldn't fly with me. My issue with the charter school funding is, I would really like to give some thought to how we spend that. I'm a big fan of sports and clubs. I will have both my children at the high school next year, so I have a personal perspective on what that loss would be. On the other hand, we have one librarian in our district in September, and although I'm as disappointed as my colleagues that the money from the charter school doesn't remotely resemble what we had hoped for, $260,000 maybe could buy us a plan of campus librarians, you know? One librarian for the, as my colleague, Ms. Martin, mentioned to me today, a lib, you know, I just think that to just pick a number and put it out for sports and clubs, and not have a plan of how we're gonna restructure it, I'm not comfortable with that. I, I don't, I really don't know what to do. I think that we should have a meeting next week, and look at what we're talking about for sports and clubs, and what would it take to maintain some kind of skeleton program across the board. But tonight, we're being asked to just pull a bunch of money out when we have no money, and throw it at clubs and sports. And although I recognize a lot of students benefit from clubs and sports, I think a lot of students benefit from librarians, especially at the middle school level, where they're learning how to do research, and the elementary level, where they're learning to identify books that interest them, that make them get excited about reading, and I just think it's a really tough call to make without all the information, or without even a chunk of information in front of us.
Thank you. Mr. Conway?
Mr. Mayor, I think we've mentioned numerous times before, there's just, there's just no easy cuts. no easy cuts. And we made, every one of us made cuts that I know that it upset each and every one of us. But I, I do want to congratulate Mr. Leary and Mr. Leahy for putting this on because I think it is, I, I think this motion is extremely important. My problem with waiting, my problem with waiting is that it's, it's once a month. I think we're gonna have another meeting in, in the following month. And, you know, we're gonna run into some real, there's a real time factor there, a time problem. I, I feel comfortable at this particular point. I think by, basically what Ms. Martin was saying is, is to take that money and put it into an accountant habit available for the, the sports. And then perhaps they can sit down within the next week or two and come up with a, a plan, a more definite plan. And once again, it might not be the full $150,000. It might be $120,000 we can get by with, or maybe $90,000, who knows? If they come up with a plan that they need $170,000, well, we don't have that. So, I mean, I would feel comfortable putting that, that $150,000 and, and the $25,000 up to that point and just put it in an account.
Total is 150.
Sorry?
The total is 150.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The 120, the 125 and the 25 to, to 150. Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hardy then, Mr. Leary?
I just would like to point something out to my colleagues. Even if we put the money back in, we're not fully funding sports and clubs, so there are gonna be cuts. We need to be privy to those decisions because there were recommended cuts at the high school finance subcommittee meeting during our budget that I absolutely would not support. I would not support eliminating our middle school sports program for $35,000. And that was one of the recommended cuts. So, I don't see, I understand we're under a timeframe, but even if we vote the money tonight, when are we gonna meet to have a decision about what cuts are gonna be made before August 18th? I mean, I'd like to have a Lowell High Subcommittee meeting next week, but we are, we're not gonna be formally meeting until August 18th. So, again, we're voting to put the money first when we don't really know how we're gonna manage the issue. Aside from, you know, the fact that many of our coaches and club advisors are paid above industry standards and we can't do anything with that without going through contract negotiations, that's not gonna happen. I realize that. Not in time for August. But even if we vote the money tonight, what is the plan about those decisions, about what gets funded and what doesn't get funded? We need to be part of that conversation. I, I absolutely, as I said, that's one cut that came right to my mind that was recommended about the middle school program. So, I don't see what the plan is other than throwing some money. We don't have a plan. And really, this, we needed a plan tonight.
Madam Superintendent?
Just a couple of points of clarification. The charter school money, which is a report later on in the, on the agenda, states to the committee that it's $260,000 and it's an approximate number. And it's an approximate number because it's enrollment-driven. So, as we were repeatedly told and informed that the money, we would receive the money right away in the first year, that did come to pass. The governor did sign that bill. But what didn't happen was that the formula itself didn't change. So, the, the use of the same old formula was expedited to, to this year. So, we are getting the 260,000 if that's as many children enroll. So, that's why it's an approximate number in the memo. And so, if in fact, the committee were to proceed and want to take any amount of monies towards sports and clubs, it would have to be from somewhere else momentarily in the budget until these numbers are confirmed. Again, I just don't wanna, you know, it's 260 approximately and we will not have that final number until we have our charter school numbers in. So, that's my recommendation. If in fact, we are going to proceed, and at no time would I recommend we go to the ceiling of the 260 because again, it's an enrollment-driven number.
Mr. Leary, did you have your hand up?
I reject the premise that this wasn't thought out. Okay? It was thought out. You're cutting quarter of a million dollars. You have different ways of doing it. We talked about percentages per sports. Certain cuts are made. You can take a specific sport and say you have X amount of coaches, you can make cuts. You can make cuts in busing. You can make, these things have been discussed. Okay? That has been acknowledged. We haven't approved it. We, many of us don't like that. Putting half the money back in, if you went through the analysis, does restore freshman sports, does allow for some integrity to the JV programs, does allow for us to have a timeframe to go through this very complex issue. Because it's not, it's not only salaries. We gotta look at duration of contracts. The superintendent points out correctly that the charter school monies at 263 is a moving number. It's reality. I said that when I began this conversation. Last meeting, we, we voted to take a half million in suspense and fund the budget. I would've rather went through and made cuts. I wouldn't have made them to sports. In fact, hindsight making everyone a genius, I would've made additional cuts to put some monies as a place marker so we could have the time to look at sports because our kids are not gonna be, they're gonna be dropping out if there's not a freshman program. I, I acknowledge this isn't the best way to do it. I'm not happy about doing it this way. If I could roll back time, I would've made additional cuts. Library media specialist, we have a motion coming up next, Mr. Leahy and I regarding that, to put a plan. I wish this was 1.5 million because I would've pushed for like a number of five or six or seven at Central because we desperately need it. There is gonna be potential monies in our unemployment account. I don't know what that's gonna be. We're not gonna know for some time, not till probably December. Hopefully, we can get some more monies for that. I'm not saying this is the best ideal situation, but the number one thing we do here is student achievement. Students. Students, students, students. And I, and I appreciate the opinions. I don't just, you know what? You made very well, good questions, very well thought-out opinions, and I know we can have some disagreement on it. I, I just didn't want to see programs and freshman programs, kids not, you know, dropping out of school and not being able to get into a freshman team. That's all.
Any further, Mr. Conway?
Just point of clarification through you to the superintendent. When is that, when are we supposed to know when that money's coming in? The charter school money?
Well, we now know that the charter school money is coming in, we, which we didn't know in June until it was signed by the governor. And we thank our delegation for their efforts because we wouldn't be receiving any of that this year if they hadn't worked on our behalf. With that said, again, when school opens, we will know our final enrollment and that's what the chapter 70 funding figure will be based on.
So, are you, are there any indications right now where these numbers are going, whether they're gonna be lower than what, what you're anticipating or perhaps higher?
Right now, we don't disagree with the, with the number. But again, just to be responsible to the committee, I can't forecast, you know, every 10 students who leave us is a significant amount of money. So, and there could be that much flux. Again, it's, it's a, it's a time that we haven't experienced before. There are other charter schools in the area where these children may opt to go. The children were counted to come back to Lowell Public Schools. We have personally, the, the school department has contacted the other charters and the existing charter and saying, okay, how many children do you think are coming to us? We've contacted other charters. But there is, you know, again, there is some flexibility.
Well, let me ask you a question. Would you feel more comfortable if it was less money? If it was, you know, again, I know we're, we're nitpicking here. If it was $100,000 and, and $20,000, instead of $150, it was $120,000, would that, is that, is, does that make it a, a stronger comfort level for us? I mean, is that what's holding us, is that what's holding us up? Because I mean, I, again, I mean, I've said it twice, I think, already, but I certainly agree with my colleagues that we need to, we need to reinstate, we certainly need to reinstate some of these, some of these sports. And, and again, I, I understand that there isn't a plan right on the table right now, but I'm sure that, you know, if, if we allocate these, these monies, and, and once again, maybe that plan on the table might be $200,000 to, to fund it. And obviously, we're not gonna be able to do that. But it, does that make, does that make any more sense for the committee? Would they feel more comfortable? Or would you feel more comfortable if we lowered that, that, that cost? And I don't disagree with Mr. Leary. I'm sure that he's gone over this to, to come up and calculate what it would cost to reinstate the freshmen and, and the JV teams. So, I would assume the figure is somewhat close.
To, to the point if we'd be comfortable, I'd be more comfortable if this was chartered territory and we had data in previous years. And, but we've never had, you know, classes closed from a charter school. And are they coming back to us? Are they going to other charters? So, because I don't have, you know, data history, which we'd like to make our decisions on, I'm not totally comfortable with the 260. To the extent that the committee wishes to reinstate $125,000 to us, to the sports and clubs at the high school, and that number is, and for some reason, that isn't a solid number, that 260, to a point Mr. Leary made previously, it would come from some other area of your budget.
Right. But I mean, if we're talking about 260, and let's assume for argument's sake it's not 260, it's 220 or 210.
Right.
But it's still, we still have the money as, as far as this motion is concerned, to be able to cover that. I'm not saying that necessarily we can do it, you know, and, and bring back other positions. Because again, you'd be cutting the budget too close. But I mean, on, on this here, again, would you feel comfortable, reasonably comfortable with that number if no, if there were no other monies taken out of that charter school account?
Right. I wouldn't feel comfortable with taking the account, the, the approximate 260. I wouldn't feel comfortable taking any more than 150 from that.
Right. Thank you.
But again, I think the committee needs to be advised that to the extent that if they choose to do that, and we're wrong, because again, it's uncharted territory. We just need to all be on the same page, that it has to come from somewhere in the budget.
Ms. Hardy?
I, just one question. I really still don't have an answer for how we would know what cuts would be made, even if we transfer that money in, and how we would be able to implement that in time for this August timeframe that the sports start. What was the plan with that?
Madam Superintendent?
The high school athletics department did present at the high school subcommittee recommendations that some of us had issues with some of the line items in that particular budget. To the extent that the committee reinstates any amount of monies, my suggestion is, is that we work with the high school, with the athletics director and the new headmaster. We've heard the concerns of various committee members on what issues they have around some of the sports and clubs. And we will sit down again and bring back to, we can set an earlier meeting than the August 18th, but we would need a few weeks to come up with the plan, based on the additional amount of dollars. And the funds and the plan could per, I guess, arguably be voted on at that time. You're not gonna vote the funds if you don't want to. If you don't like the plan, you could do it that way, I guess.
Ms. Hardy?
As a follow-up, I, my, I'm hearing from my colleagues that we don't have the time to wait, but it doesn't seem to me that whether we put the money over or not, we still have to wait until we get a plan to approve. Is that correct? Because we, it's not gonna happen till August 18th. Even the cuts we made during the budget cycle, we never specifically said what was being cut from athletics. We said, we're gonna cut a number and we're gonna figure it out. Right?
Madam Superintendent?
To be fair to our athletics director and, and the head, the previous headmaster, they did put a lot of work into the proposal that they brought in front of us for the proposed cuts to athletics, given that they're on the ground, working in the high school, have knowledge of, you know, the athletics program. That was presented and they believe that's the best recommendation. At that meeting, I did state, as I stated to Mr. Samaras before that meeting, that I would not be recommending the cut of the $35,000 to the middle school athletics program. I did defer to their expertise in the area. If this is the least harm and this is what you think is best for the program, okay, we can have another conversation about that depending on where the budget goes. But at that time, given the fact that the high school sports program costs just under a million dollars to take the only 35,000 out of the middle school intramurals program, wasn't gonna be a recommendation I was gonna bring forward to the committee.
Ms. Hardy, follow-up?
I agree. And that was one that stuck in my mind. But my other concern with their recommendations were, they wanted to cut across the board assistant coaches. When you have some sports that have a slew of assistant coaches and some sports like Crewe that has one assistant coach with 100 kids out on the river in the fall. So, it's not just a simple, like this one little middle school cut is not acceptable. There were several areas where I think we have to look at inequity. We're spending more on boys' sports than we're spending on girls' sports. It's a complicated decision how we're gonna revamp, aside from the salaries and the stipends, because we can't even go there
Right.
in this timeframe. But it is something that we're gonna need to have a conversation about what gets cut, what stays, and what makes sense about it. And I, that has to happen. And we're not gonna be meeting as a full committee again till August 18th. And so, I don't know why we would allocate the money tonight when we could work in the next, you know, the timeframe we have to come up with the plan. And then by then, maybe have a better sense of what we can actually count on from the charter school. I, I don't know.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. If I could make a recommendation, I think we're, having heard those concerns, I think the cleanest way for us to do this would be to recommend this, to refer rather, this motion to the high school subcommittee, asking for a report during the course of the next couple of weeks, indicating the recommendations, administration, high school administration, the athletics director, of what this kind of investment in our sports program would look like. We have a meeting of the high school subcommittee, then we can make the determinations. If it does indeed meet with the concerns we have, parity is a huge issue for girl versus boys' sports, obviously. You know, the middle school program, I think there's been some consistency in that. We're all, you know, that this committee really wants to see that investment continue. We all recognize freshman sports, assist, you know, we all recognize that these cuts were made on the fly and were driven by a lot of different pressures. We're now giving them what I think in this current environment is a great luxury of saying, there is on the table an opportunity for you to save your programs in a significant way. This is a significant amount of money. And I would really like to see in the next two weeks that we can pull together our high school subcommittee, have a well-thought-out, well-considered recommendation from administration of both Central and the high school that could tell us what this investment could look like. And then we make the decision whether it's a worthy investment.
Now, would it be a, a joint high school and athletic subcommittee or just? Okay. Athletic and Lowell High School Subcommittee. So, you want to move that, to amend the substitute motion?
If the makers don't allow that?
Yeah.
We have, but, I'm sorry?
We have a substitute motion in second and on, on the floor right now.
Correct. And, and the secretary's telling me that we can amend the substitute motion.
Okay.
To refer?
I would just, if I could, to my colleagues, you're really, you're up against the wall for fall freshman sports. You really are. Can't, they will be canceled. Now, you're right. Ms. Martin's right. You, we, as you lay out fall, winter, you can work with that. And I agree. I think the high school subcommittee should be involved with this as well as the athletics. Because intramurals, as a recommendation to be cut, I don't support either. I think at this point, we either need to fund the money or we gotta anticipate we're not gonna have a fall freshman program. That's all. And I, I understand, I don't disagree with a lot of comments made. I think that work has to be done. I just think now putting this money in is a good place because a lot of folks wanna know if they're gonna come back as assistant coach or they're gonna start looking for other jobs. You know, and it's not, I appreciate, I do appreciate the information. I don't disagree with it. I think there's amazing amount of inequities. When I went through the $125,000 figure, I'll take the football team because that's the one I know the best. You don't need that number of assistant coaches. You have to make some cuts. But you do have to have an offensive coordinator, a defensive coordinator... But you do have to have an offensive coordinator, a defensive coordinator, a freshman coach, bare minimum, and a head coach. Bare minimum. And if he can't tell those people they have jobs, then that's an issue. Soccer coach, you need to have an assistant soccer coach. You can't have just a soccer coach. And on, and on, and on. And I agree, crew coach is way underpaid, way understaffed. I don't disagree with any of that. That has to be changed, but isn't going to be changed between now and September. It's going to be taking a little bit of time, because it is complex, and they do have contractual issues with it. That's all. And I appreciate, and I don't disagree with what people are saying tonight, I'm all on board, I think there should be a little high school subcommittee in the next two weeks, but I think the funding is imperative right now, and ironing out the details, and they must be ironed out, needs to be done and can be done by the 18th. But not funding this stuff, you're up against the wall right now. That's all. And I say that with respect, I'm not trying to be argumentative, it's just, that's it, it's reality. Thank you.
Did we get a second on the amended substitute motion? Second by Ms. Doherty? Any further discussion? Madam Superintendent?
Just to make the, the suggestion, Mr. Lang just spoke with me with regards to Mr. Leary's concern, and the first meeting in August was canceled on the third or the first, whatever the first Wednesday is, because we only have one. Perhaps if we could bring the information together for that time, would that be agreeable to the committee? The first Wednesday of August, the first week?
Is the suggestion that we meet, we add a meeting in August?
Yes.
Okay, so would we have the report before then?
Sorry, the, the first Wednesday in August, is August 4th. I was just suggesting, because it was an off day, if we wanted to have a special meeting in the school committee, with that really being the sole topic that night, don't stack the agenda. Not that I think you would, just have that be the, the one agenda. We could either have a subcommittee meeting prior to that, to at least kind of lay out the, the administration's plans, just do it that night, and then take an action, which would still be the first week in August, which I have to think would be sufficient to, to let, it's only two weeks away, to let fall coaches know.
So what date would that be, August 4th?
It's Wednesday, August 4th.
Well. Right. Okay, any further discussion on the amended motion on the floor to refer the issue of transferring $150,000 from the charter school money to the law high school athletic budget, and some monies to the law high school activities club, but that that would be referred to a joint meeting of the law high school subcommittee and the athletic subcommittee for a report back, to have a special meeting on August 4th to deal just with that item? That? Yes. Is that okay? Well, the only thing I added was the August 4th, I mean, that's, Ms. Martin?
If I could, recognizing the scheduling concerns, could we impress upon the administration, particularly at the high school level, that it would be imperative that we get written information prior, so that if there were concerns from the chairs, we'd, they'd be able to weigh in through the administration and make any concerns they had known? I mean, it's going to be, it's, having a joint subcommittee when neither committee chair can be there is a problem. Which no, none of us knew, I mean, obviously, when we're making this concern, but would then would we be able to get that information out to you early enough that you would be able to respond and have an opportunity to discuss with the administration any concerns, to ensure that, you know, your voice would be heard in the conversation?
So both, both?
Yes, Madam Superintendent?
So both, both chairs are on holidays?
That first week in August. I mean, I, I'm in driving distance, I could come back, it's, you know, we rent a place at the beach, it wasn't my plan. I don't know about my colleague, if he's
Right, no, I know.
That's the other thing, are we going to try to do it all in that one day?
Yes.
We're going to get a report in advance, we're going to discuss it, and we're going to decide. And if we need, can we have it in advance, so if we need more information, you've got some time to get more information to us? That would, I would echo my colleagues
I, I get back from vacation next Monday, so I could work with the high school staff over the course of the week and have a
We'll grab them.
We'll grab them. And have a report to you Friday.
By Friday, okay.
And then you could read it over the weekend, and contact me Monday if you need additional information, and then we just post the special meeting for the Wednesday, the 4th.
Madam Superintendent?
But I really would like to reiterate Ms. Martin's comments with regards to, it would really be helpful if the committee gave us all your feedback, your concerns, if we've missed something, so that when we come that night, I want to bring a proposal forward that every single member of the committee has had a comment on, and their issues have been addressed in the report.
Mr. Conway?
I would like to add something here, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time, because we all know what subcommittee meetings, they last forever and ever, and we put numerous things on the, is it just one item? That's it?
Correct.
No more items, just one? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
One more clarification, since we are meeting as the whole committee, I really don't think it is a subcommittee meeting then, right? Okay, so the subcommittee meets first, and then we go to full committee? Okay, I understand.
Madam Superintendent?
That was my only point.
Okay.
No, they're going to be there for that.
If action's going to be taken, Mayor, it has to go into a special.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call. Amended? Correct.
Mr. Larry?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
May Millaniso?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Laraba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
No.
Five yeas, two nays, substitute, I mean, amended substitute motion passes.
Thank you. Next motion by Mr. Leary and Mr. Leahy, request the superintendent to provide a plan which would create a central office, library, media, technology position, or positions, in an effort to offset the cuts made at each school during the 2010-2011 budget. Mr. Leary?
I'm afraid to talk at this point, it's like scary. I know there's no money, but I think it's important that we put a plan together if there is a grant, funding, or some other types of funds that may come in. This is a major loss to the system. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Again, it's to put a plan together, ask the superintendent to provide a plan. Any further discussion, Ms. Laraba?
Are we asking for an informational plan, or are we asking her to pull money from someplace else and create this position? Throw you to the
Well, I'd like to get a recommendation of the superintendent, a plan. If it's informational only, if money comes available, or if something where she feels moving in money would be appropriate, that'd be great, but I think this is something that we need to look at from a central office position, because obviously, we can't fund it in schools. So I'm willing to let the expertise of the administration come forward, but to, to not address it is not responsible. Thank you.
Any further discussion? We're going to, I'm going to ask for a roll call.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
May Millaniso?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Laraba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Next motion by Mr. Leary and Mr. Leahy, request that the law school committee enter into negotiations with each law public school's union where it is applicable, and to allow for releasing both the union and administrations negotiating positions to the public in writing on a regular basis. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. Motion basically speaks for itself, this is just a, another attempt to try to get more openness in the process of negotiation contracts with our union, for having, to just allow the public to have a clear understanding of what happens, and how their money is spent, so basically, we'd like to just keep pushing the issue of having, having more transparency in the negotiation process. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd just indulge me for one minute, I'd just like to direct your attention to page eight of the handout of the new open meeting regulations, which really touches upon what both Mr. Leahy and Mr. Leary are speaking about, and that's the release of executive session minutes in what would be defined as a reasonable interval. So again, I think we have to refer back to the new open meeting law as written, which again, I think it accomplishes what Mr. Leahy and Mr. Leary are trying to do, because it does say that the chair or his designee is required at reasonable intervals to review, to review the executive session minutes to determine what can be released, and that determination shall be announced publicly at the next open session. Again, what is reasonable interval, the answer may come in regulation to be issued by the Attorney General. So again, I think this is kind of a work in, a work in process, but again, I understand the gist of the motion. Any further discussion, and Ms. Doherty?
I'd just like to say, I think that the intent of the motion is excellent, that we, we need to establish ground rules with our unions that we negotiate with, and my understanding of state law is they have to agree. So I think we should ask, we should ask if this is something that they would find helpful going forward as we begin our negotiations. The other piece makes it seem like they might not have a choice in the matter anyway, that, I mean, if we have ongoing contract negotiations, and the Attorney General decides that this is a reasonable amount of time, that this information can be shared with the public, that might make the whole issue moot, but for, in terms of tonight's vote, I think we should support this motion, we should ask our unions if they would consider, because it, it does require mutual agreement, if they would consider structuring our ongoing negotiations this way, and then if not, you know, this is another avenue to pursue.
Correct. Madam Superintendent?
Just a point of clarification, Mayor, I don't have the document in front of me that you're referring to, but I, could you clarify, please, if it states that they're to be reviewed by, for example, the chair, and determine if, in fact, the information still needs to be held confidential, that in fact it has concluded?
Correct. The way, the way I'm reading, the way I'm interpreting the paragraph, it just simply states that's been long true, that executive session minutes are to be made public when the need for secrecy ceases to exist. Now the chair or his designee is required at reasonable intervals to review the executive session minutes to determine what can be released. Madam Superintendent?
I think what we may need to have clarified, Mayor, is the first sentence and how it connects to the second, with regards to, "It has long been true that executive session minutes are to be made public when the need for secrecy ceases to exist." So in this present example, if we were in contract negotiations, and those negotiations hadn't concluded yet, what I think it's trying to address is that the contract negotiation has concluded, but it's a year down the road, and the public still doesn't know what in fact was discussed at that time. And I think with the Attorney General, and again, I'm not a lawyer, but just my interpretation of it, and we perhaps need further clarification, is trying to say is that these need to be released in a timely fashion after the issue has been resolved.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Laraba?
If I understand the motion correctly, they just want to be able to provide updates, and I, I guess the question is if the union doesn't agree to release their side, would we still be able to release our side? Or does that have to be agreed upon mutually?
Right. Any further discussion on the motion that's presented? I don't know if we need a roll call, or
Except you, I don't know.
Right. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Next motion by Ms. Doherty, request the superintendent to report to the committee on a plan for parent-teacher meetings during the 2010-2011 school year that demonstrates the most effective use of staff time to engage parents in their children's education. The plan should encompass a coordinated effort between schools regarding meeting times that will enhance parent participation, such as shortly after the first marking period and at staggered days' times, to make it easier for parents to attend multiple schools. The report should include the dates and formats of both parent-teacher meetings, one evening and one afternoon for each school, as well as rationale for choices and plans for outreach. Second, by Ms. Martin, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, I apologize for such a long-winded motion, but this has been an ongoing issue for us. We, we currently have in our contracts, one evening parent-teacher meeting and one afternoon, and my intention with this is to really try to get the most bang for our buck with that time that we can. And in the past, we've had situations where schools will overlap on their parent-teacher night, which makes it complicated for parents to attend if they have multiple children, and some of the other issues such as the, the use of the afternoon day, you know, is it really, I'm really looking for a coordinated plan that, so that we could really get the most use of that very little time that we've got, and that's my intention. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the motion? Mr. Leahy?
Just, it's a good motion, it's something we've been asking for, for a long time, and just to be very clear, we want these. We don't want any meetings in the afternoon that are just for children at risk. It's two meetings a year. It should have been happening two years ago, needs to happen this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conway?
Just, just for a point of clarification here, and, and I'm not disagreeing with the, with the motion at all, I, I think it is a good motion. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the superintendent, what do we, what's the present plan now, or what are we doing now?
Madam Superintendent?
Just a brief history on this particular topic. Two years ago, when I first arrived, I gather it had just been negotiated, and we requested clarification from the principals on what they were doing. We've tracked it, and this year, based on the tracking information that we received last year, there was, because the principals were setting their own individual schedules of when these events would be, what Ms. Doherty has shown here as a problem in this motion is correct. So we actually, I've been working with John Dakota to come up with a master schedule that in fact will tell the schools when these nights will be and afternoons, so that, because it's not fair to an individual principal to have to call all these principals, we're just going to do it district-wide, which does take, the language in the contract does speak to the coordination of this day and evening by the building administration, but we just think it's going to be smoother for everyone for us to coordinate it, so that there will continue to be some overlap, perhaps, we're going to do our best, but to look at particular clusters of schools, to make sure at least those aren't overlapping, as well to Mr. Leahy's concern. As the committee has discussed here before, we all have a concern that there's not enough hours in the contract presently, and we really, you know, arguably, it would be better to have four times a year that our parents were given the opportunity to come in and talk about student achievement with their students. And the time negotiated, greatly appreciated by staff, by the, by the committee, is, you know, we're, they still have a certain block of time, and we are going to ask them to consider the best use of that time, and to your concern, Mr. Leahy, you know, there is going to be some tension around how much time is going to be spent with children at risk, perhaps, they're going to need, you know, more time with those parents than, than perhaps other parents who don't necessarily have to meet on that day, but maybe can meet another day. Our point is, we want all of our parents to meet with our teachers, and our teachers are very cooperative, even if they can't meet during that day, they'll meet other times, within the week, or, you know, even a phone call. We encourage our parents to call their teachers and set up meetings. It doesn't have to be just in this contracted time, because I don't think there's enough time to do the job we need to do with, working with our families during that limited time. To Ms. Doherty's motion, it's a, it's a greatly appreciated motion, I think we do need to maximize that time that we do have, but I want to clearly send the message that we encourage our families to call anytime, and nobody's to be turned away.
Ms. Doherty, then Ms. Laraba?
Just one quick thing, to me, the collaboration piece is what's really been missing, and I love the idea that there'll be a master schedule, and the way I imagine it is that we have a period of time, whether it's a three-week period, after the first grades come out, that the whole city knows And the way I imagine it is that we have a period of time, whether it's a three-week period, after the first grades come out, that the whole city knows this is when our schools are really, you know, asking you to come in, because I think for many of the cultures, we're such a diverse city, they might not be used to being part, you know, being in the schools, being part. And I really, that's why you'll see, I speak specifically about outreach plans. I really want to see a plan that shows how we're going to do this, and that it will be the beginning of a yearly event that people will recognize, oh, this is the time we get called into our schools. And I hear what you're saying, it's not the only time, and it's clearly not enough, but to have this kind of collaborative coordinated effort is exactly what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Ms. Lariva?
I just really wanted to touch on a point that the superintendent said regarding the teachers and their willingness to talk to parents. And I have to say, in the 10 years that my son has been in the Lowell school system, there has never been a teacher that hadn't been willing to make an appointment, or send a note back, or, you know, return a phone call. And as you may imagine, I'm somebody that certainly would ask questions, so that's something that I've always appreciated about the teachers, whether, you know, whether they were busy or not, it may not have been, you know, two minutes after I called, but certainly they've always done the follow-up. So I think they're to be commended for that. And of course, if we can get more time face-to-face for other parents to do that, I think that would be great.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
I did appreciate as well the suggestion of the first marking period in Ms. Doherty's motion, and that makes a lot of sense. And the at this point in time, we're working on a schedule that would look at the period of time after the first marking period and after the second, because we think it's really important to make sure that all the, you know, all of our parents are working collaboratively with our teachers and their children on the issues that the teachers see from the beginning of the year, and hopefully, people will come in after the third as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next motion by Ms. Doherty, request the superintendent report to the committee on a plan for how each school will begin will make the most effective use of Staff Orientation Day in preparation for the 2010-2011 school year. In addition to scheduling and student assignments, Orientation Day should include professional development such as student data analysis and grade-level team meetings to launch the new school year. Second by Mr. Conway, Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just briefly on this motion, we all know what it cost us to keep Orientation Day this year, that we all decided that it was very important, that all our staff are there, and I just this is just a kind of, again, that collaboration piece, that when the superintendent is meeting with her leadership team, that they have a clear plan of how they're going to make the best use of that time, that are that one day that our staff come in before school starts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The last motion by Ms. Lariva, request the committee review and revise the current superintendent evaluation tool specifically to craft an evaluation tool that is in line with the evaluation tools used statewide, that reduces the number of questions overall and keys in on agreed-upon core areas of concern, provides questions that can be answered in quantifiable ways, and reduces the number of purely subjective responses. The objective is to provide the superintendent with a tool that discusses past performance as well as providing set and measurable goals for the upcoming year. Second by Ms. Doherty. Ms. Lariva?
Thank you, Your Honor. As we all know, this year was my first year working on the evaluation tool, and I realized some of it has to do with the fact that I was the new kid on the block, but I found some of the questions just hard to really respond to because I didn't have the eyes on, and I felt uncomfortable with giving responses, so I kept it as a meat. I wasn't smart enough as the mayor to just leave it blank. But in researching on other places and how they handle their evaluations, and also drawing on my experience giving performance reviews in my life in the business world, I'm really looking for something that is not not as cumbersome. I guess that's, you know, I found it a I found the 75 questions cumbersome. I'm really looking to work with the with the committee to come up with what are really our core concerns are for the superintendent's job, and to provide some clear goals going forward. In my mind, that's really all part and parcel of an evaluation review process, that that we discuss what has been happening and what we would like to see going forward, and just to establish those goals as part of the process. You know, it's not to knock the current one, I just my understanding is it's been in place for several years, and, you know, we could meet and decide that maybe that is the best tool all along, but I would like to sit down and discuss it. I know that we had some conversations and concerns about, you know, what the parameters were and what the what the actual discussions were versus the status, you know, meets and does not meet versus a numbered scale. So I think it would be beneficial for us as a group to sit down and really hash out what we want to be discussing, and then as part of the conversation with the superintendent going forward, what she would like to see as a tool, what would be the most helpful to her in terms of of meeting our expectations and exceeding our expectations. You know, when you look at the evaluations we gave this year, everyone gave her positive reviews. I just I would just like to take the time to take a look at it and see if we can craft something that's a little more to the point and a little bit easier to discuss on what we actually see, because there were some frankly, some questions on that evaluation that I don't think I'll ever be able to see how the superintendent actually interacts with some of her staff and stuff. And to me, that's if you're going to make those kind of comments, you really need to have, and I'm not in her office every day, I'm not in, you know, I work during the day, so I, you know, then I'm relying on hearsay, and I'm not comfortable with doing that either. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think that we should look at this through the Personnel Subcommittee. That would make the most sense, if my colleagues are okay with that. And I would also recommend that we check in with the Mass Association of School Committees and see if there are some instruments we could look at that are currently being used as a starting point. Oh, good. Okay, thank you.
So does the maker of the motion, are you okay with referring that to the Personnel Subcommittee? I'll look to the chair of the Personnel Subcommittee.
So you've already collected this data for us?
I have.
So then we probably should still talk with Mass Association for School Committees? Or have you collected what you've?
I've collected information that they have available on their website. I have not spoken with anybody directly at Mass Association of School Committees.
I just don't want to dismiss an idea if unless it's really been covered, so we really should still be investigating.
I just wanted to let her know that I was thinking about what she said.
Okay.
So the maker of the motion is okay to have the motion referred to the Personnel Subcommittee?
Yes. Okay, so that was by Ms. Doherty's?
That was by Ms. Doherty, second by?
By Ms. Lariva.
By Ms. Lariva. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Vote. Moving on to the subcommittees, the Facility Subcommittee, report an approval of the minutes of the meeting of June 24th by Chairman Leahy. Mr. Leahy?
Facility Subcommittee meeting Subcommittee met on June 25th at 6:30. At the meeting, present were myself, Mr. Leary and Ms. Doherty, Mr. Conway and Ms. Lariva, Ms. Martin were also present. Also, Superintendent, Mr. Lang and Mr. Curley, Director of Operations and Management Maintenance. First order of business, we got a status of the Amoresco Performance Contract and the Building Maintenance, as far as the maintenance to Lowell Public Schools. So at the meeting, Mr. Robert Masilia, who was recently hired as the Energy Manager for the City Lowell, he was there, he introduced himself, he gave us a brief update and an overview of the work that would be happening in the Lowell Schools over the summer. Secondly, also, Mr. Gunther Wallenstein was there, the Director of Recycling for the City. So the second order of business was the status of the recycling efforts in the public schools. Mr. Wallenstein had a conversation with us about our efforts and how we can try to better recycle throughout the schools. A motion was made by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Leary. Take the matter under advisement and request that the superintendent and her staff bring forward a recommendation pertaining to a draft goal slash mission slash plan for Lowell Public Schools pertaining to recycling at the August meeting, school committee meeting, and that was approved three to nothing. So in our packet, I guess there is a initial draft, no? I'm sorry.
That's what they distributed that night for us to take a look at.
Oh, all right, okay.
So we're going to work from that.
So we'll have something at the August meeting? Okay. All right. And then third, with Mr. Curley, we discussed, we were provided a partial inventory list of surplus in the schools. So Mr. Curley was there to discuss the status of school surplus items and supplies that are in our schools. The goal is to try to itemize these products and and extra goods so that in the hopes that we could generate some revenue for the school service. So that's an ongoing process and work in progress. So we'll be updated, I guess, in the next couple of months on where that's going, and hopefully, we can try to clear out some space, get some, generate revenue, and there was just a motion made by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Doherty, to adjourn at that point. So it's a brief meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leahy. Anybody else want to comment on the minutes? Motion to approve the minutes and accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Vote. Next Subcommittee Report, Special Education Student Support Services Subcommittee, report and approval of the minutes of the meeting of June 24th. Chairperson, Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Special Ed Subcommittee did meet. Present were myself and committee members John Leahy and Connie Martin. Other committee members present include Allison Lariva, Jim Leary, and school department personnel were Chris Scott, Superintendent, and Assistant Superintendent Anne Murphy. One of the items we discussed was the significant movement of special education staff. Many of our special education staff will be assigned to new locations beginning in September, and Assistant Superintendent Murphy outlined the process and and how that the reasoning behind some of those movements. We also had an update on the Special Education Director. The position has been reposted, and we were able to, the expectation is they'll fill that position by the end of July. We also were told that our Special Education Accountability Status has improved from Level Four Needs Intervention to Level Two Meets Requirements at Risk. This was a huge positive for us, that we've been able to really turn things around quite a bit in our Special Education Department, and we continue to look forward to making gains in that area. We also went over the Lowell High School Parent and Student Handbook. There were some minor changes to the handbook, which I believe we have to approve tonight, those changes, and many of them were just putting in the name of the new headmaster, things like that. There was not anything substantive. I believe my colleagues all have a copy of the handbook where the changes were highlighted in a different color ink, red, I think. So the and we at the end of my report, I guess we'd make a motion to approve the changes to the handbook, because the last thing we talked about was the public schools registration guidelines and developing a real set of procedures to follow in registering a student who does not reside with a parent or legal guardian, that we need to just establish clear guidelines around how that happens throughout the district. There was a motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leahy, to accept the report as a report of progress, and I guess, separate from that, I would make a motion that we accept the revisions to the Lowell High School Student Handbook.
That's something different from the new business item, correct? The handbook language that we're going to be looking at, that's something different than what's on under new business, correct? That's a separate item? We have a school committee bullying policy in handbook language? That's a separate call?
That is different, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept the new language in the handbook, seconded by Ms. Lariva. Any further discussion? I believe we need a roll call. Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Millenazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Lariva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Any other discussion on the report and the minutes? Motion to accept the report as a report of progress and to approve the minutes as presented by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Lariva. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Vote. Reports of the superintendent. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. The first report's the charge school funding reimbursement. That has been, I believe, fully discussed at this time, and again, I will update the committee when we have final numbers. I apologize to the committee on the agenda, it says Reduction in Workforce Update, but in your packet, it's the first personnel report. And basically, this report just gives the committee a sense of how many of our professional, non-professional teachers were displaced. Nineteen professional status teachers were displaced, and eighteen non-professional teachers were displaced from our schools. Twenty-three teachers were placed into open positions already in the compendium so that we won't be able, we won't have to incur unemployment costs for those. Fourteen teachers were laid off and will be placed on a teacher recall list. The final compendium for our opening teaching positions came out on Wednesday, on July 14th, and there are 25 open positions. So at this time, we think we're between the amount of leaves we have this year and vacancies within the system, and we will be able to absorb many of our teachers back into positions. That again, is the professional, non-professional status teachers that we have obligations to. However, it does not include long-term subs. And 25 paraprofessionals were also laid off, and I have requested a report of unemployment costs to come forward. We should have that in August for the August meeting. The next report.
We can take the reports all together, can't we? Yeah.
Okay. The next report's on the Massachusetts 21st Century Community Learning Center's grant. It's a high school innovation grant, which is worth $140,000, and the funding comes from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to develop innovative, creative, and engaging extended-time learning opportunities for our students. We intend to offer a high-rich project-based learning program for students at the Freshman Academy entitled the Compass Program, Pointing You in New Directions for the 21st Century, which was intentionally designed to address workforce and college readiness and to build upon student success. So we're very pleased, and it's because of grants like these that we will be able to continue to offer innovation, innovative programming.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Conway.
I'd just like to make a quick comment on that. I think especially during the times that we're in, and money is so extremely tight, I want to congratulate Dr. Scott and the staff on putting this together, and especially the partnerships, because again, we're going to be going after every nickel and dime, and we're taking a look at the amounts of money of $100,000 and $140,000. I think that's that's absolutely fantastic. So I think, you know, again, monies are going to be extremely tight here for grants, and whatever we can grab is certainly going to help us out, especially coming up next year. So I congratulate your staff in regards to that.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Madam Superintendent?
And this is a we now that we have won this grant, it is a reoccurring opportunity for us for the next four years, and we have a very good track record, once we get the grants, that in fact, we do receive it for the full time allotted, and 100 students will be impacted by the program. The next grant that we've received is the Motorola Grant. The next grant that we've received is the Motorola Grant Awarded, and we partnered with University of Massachusetts Lowell to come up with this proposal, and we've received $100,000 from Motorola to expand the Design Lab, after-school engineering workshops to engage many more disadvantaged middle school students in designing and building their own technologies such as security systems, motorized pencil sharpeners, electromagnetic animals, and laser light shows. Design Lab is a fun, hands-on program that challenges students to use the engineering design process to solve real problems, engaging them in high-level critical and creative problem-solving. Lowell Public Schools will work with UMass Lowell to offer this dynamic after-school programming at our middle schools and the 21st Century Community Learning Center sites over the next two years. Lowell—
Oh, Ms. Lariva.
Would you happen to know, Madam Superintendent, is this the same program that has—in the past gone under the name of I code through UMass Lowell in the Future Engineering Program?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the name.
It's—the—they've called it I code, International Internet Community of Design Engineers? Or is this a separate program?
I have to clarify that, but this is through the Design Camp, that presently exists an extension of that at UMass Lowell that many of our students go to in the summertime. But we wanted to bring it to our middle school students, because not enough of our students avail themselves of that opportunity for a whole host of reasons, so we're bringing it to them.
Excellent, and do we have a process in place to advertise it? Because I have to tell you, my son has participated in Design Camp, and it's a great program, and to be able to bring it into the schools is a great idea, and I'd just like to make sure that we're advertising it so that as many people about it—know about it as possible and can attend. Thank you.
The next report is entitled Lowell Public Schools Partners with the New England Quilt Museum for Exhibitions of Student Work, and I'd like to congratulate all those involved at the museum and our staff at the Maury School for organizing the project, and it is presently—all the quilts are on display at the museum, and there are 66 mini-quilts and books, and they're on display now through August 26. The next report entitled End of the Year Health Services Report. It's quite a lengthy and involved report, but I would like to bring the committee's attention to a few points. The Mobile Oral Health Services has been—the Mobile has been coming here to Lowell, servicing our students for many years now, and this year, they saw 782 students received some type of dental service. A total of 3,228 procedures was done. As well, this year, Assistant Superintendent Murphy brought forward the proposal and to partner with New England College of Optometry to bring what we call the Child Self-Refraction Study here to Lowell, and 47 of our students that were seen needed attention with regards to poor vision, and one student was referred for serious abnormalities to their middle eye. There was quite a bit of discussion last year at this time about the pending epidemic of the H1N1 flu, and I do want to update the committee that a total of 1,043 students received the vaccination, and we do thank the Lowell Health Department for their cooperation with us through that entire H1N1 epidemic season. We were the first to have the H1N1 visit our district in the Commonwealth, and the Health Department was great to work with, and then they set out, working with our staff, to come up with a very comprehensive plan that ensured that our students and staff were safe. So I'd like to thank Assistant Superintendent Murphy for not only this report, but the leadership she provided to ensure that all these programs and benefits were in place for our students.
Mr. Leahy?
Just one quick comment on the report. It was a good report, and through you Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Murphy, it was a good report, and it gave us a lot of information that we were looking for, and we appreciate it with all the extra work you had on your plate. Thank you.
Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have one quick question and one comment. I'll start with the comment. I'm thrilled with the nursing services for field trips. For short money, $5,000 a year, we're able to make sure every child is entitled to attend a field trip, which was not happening prior to this, and I want to personally thank Assistant Superintendent Murphy for taking care of this. It was a very important issue for me. The second thing is the question. When we talked about the self-refraction—refraction study, which I think is also excellent, that we're getting eyeglasses for kids who need them, when you said one student was referred for medical services due to an abnormality of the middle eye, what does—I'm not sure what that means.
From the reports that we received, 49 students had failed the initial screening from the Health Department. Of those 49, 47 of those students actually needed prescription lenses, so they were given their prescriptions. One of those students had a significant impairment in the middle eye of one of their eyes, the left or the right, and they were then referred to a medical facility in Boston.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
There was no three-eye children. Okay, list of eligible teachers as submitted. Personnel report. And that concludes the reports of the superintendent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. Through you Superintendent, I just have one more quick question on the charter school funding reimbursement.
Yes.
You know, and I know it's out of our control, but the—it was my understanding last month that they thought they were gonna—the total was gonna be about a million-something, and so we ended up getting the 263, 297. So that's about reimbursed us for about 22 students out of the—what is it, 200 coming over?
Approximately.
All right. And just—can you just—what's their explanation again?
Sure.
It's the formula?
Sure.
I mean, I thought we had special legislation going for this, and—
We did, and the legislation—last time we met, I informed the committee that—I didn't think we could act on the 1 or 1.5, because we weren't sure of the exact amount, and it wasn't signed by the governor and the House officials. As we were told, the language in the legislation says that the money will follow the children in the same year that they leave the charter school. So that's why that assumption was made.
Right.
When it was passed on the Hill, I suggested to Mr. Lang that we're not gonna run the numbers based on that language. We will let Jeff Wilson, who is the Chief Financial Executive Officer for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, run the numbers. Because our experience with running the numbers was, three weeks—sorry, three months ago, we thought we were gonna be—when the charter school announced that these grades would be coming over, we thought we would be receiving money and funding for these students. They ran the numbers, and in fact, we were getting minus $100,000. The legislation was put into place, and again, not to count our chickens before they were hatched, we said, "Well, let them run the numbers." I heard—again, I contacted him, I asked him to run the numbers, because they're familiar with the legislation, and he emailed me back, and actually, the $260,000 number wasn't on there, but an explanation of how it would be calculated was. So after numerous phone calls, we had the conversation that went like this. "Yes, Chris, the language does say that the money will follow the children in the same year that they come. However, in the law, there's also a formula attached to that, and that wasn't changed." There needed to be two changes for us to immediately see the funding for those students who are coming. And basically, it's my understanding, is that when—this 260,000 would have, under the old legislation, impacted our budget in FY12. Because of the efforts of our delegation, at least it's coming in FY11. What's not coming is the entire amount, because the funding formula's still intact, and it takes three years for us to recoup the total cost of educating those students. So just like when a charter—a student of ours leaves and goes to the charter school, the charter school does not receive 100% of that funding from us in the first year. They, in fact, receive that funding over three.
So when we turn in our numbers in October, that's when we'll know what the final reimbursement is for this year, for this coming year?
Actually, that number was calculated last October. If you recall, my original concern was, these children weren't in front of us last October 1st. That was our original concern, and that it need to be addressed in the legislation for the money to follow the children this year. What we've been told with this piece of legislation is, in fact, even though they weren't in front of you last October, we're gonna do the calculation after enrollment at the beginning of the year, and the allocation that comes to the city for those children will go to you, not the charter school, based on this formula. That's the key. So that's really all the information we have at this time with regards to—and again, it's an approximate number, because it's enrollment-driven.
So just so I'm understanding it, they closed down the upper grades.
Right.
They're sending a potential of 200 children into the school system. We don't know exactly how many.
Right.
And we're not getting reimbursed, really, this year.
Right, so arguably, if the amount of—the total cost of educating those students based on the chapter funding formula that we base—that we use for all of our other students, let's say it cost us a million dollars. What they're saying is that we're basically gonna receive a quarter of that money in the first year, but it will take a period of three years. So technically, they're right, the money's gonna follow the children the year they're coming, it's just not all of it.
And that was the change in the legislation.
The change in the legislation made it possible that that formula kicked in immediately, and that there was no delay, but there was no discussion with regards to, you know, information that we had, that when the language reads that the money's gonna follow, the assumption was the money would follow right away, entirety.
All right. Because I figured this covers about 12 students, maybe 14.
It definitely poses another financial challenge for us to educate students who quite clearly have, you know, many issues. That's why they're closing those particular grades and coming to us, and Lowell Public Schools will rise to the occasion and make sure that they receive the best education possible.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Lariva, then Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Your Honor. As appreciative as I am of the legislature, our representatives' efforts on this part, it would seem to me that our next step as a body is to approach our representatives to try to address the funding issue. Have we—and I say "we" as the imperial "we," but has the—have you as the superintendent been able to have any of those kind of conversations, or are we still just trying to address this part? Because I think—I think we do need as a body to say, "You kinda got us halfway there, but you need to get us all the way there and try to recoup some of this money earlier." And it sounds like we need to ask them to address the funding part of it, the funding formula part of it. Is that correct?
There are—as we now know, there are two components to this particular issue in front of us, and I don't think it's to be underestimated, the forces behind the present funding formula and what had to occur for us to even get it bumped up to the present fiscal year. The charter school movement is very strong in the state, and there are, you know, many issues. We can ask the delegation, again, to look at the funding formula, but again, it's a significant climate this time. All the laws that have been passed in the last six months have strengthened the charter school movement, and so I just want to be realistic of what everybody's up against.
I understand your point about being realistic, but I just—I think it's important as a group that we send something to say, "Very appreciative that it's here now, but we still feel you need to take another step, given that you've strengthened the position for the charter schools. Let's put us back on a better playing field, or a level playing field, and give us the—you know, change this formula." And I don't know if my colleagues agree with that or not, but I certainly wouldn't have a problem with putting my name on that kind of a letter.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. In terms of the way the charter formula funding works, just so I'm understanding it in both directions, when a child leaves our district, in year one, we still receive 100% of their—their per pupil—they're counted. We get the full freight for that student.
That's my understanding.
They left September 1st, but we get the full freight for them.
Right.
Because they were counted the year before.
Exactly.
So it's 100% the first year. The second year, this child's gone from our system, we get how much?
I don't know the exact number. Mr. Lang, do you?
I don't know the exact percentage. It's three years, it's a percentage.
So like, we'll go in equal chunks, then? So in year two, you know, we're still getting 66% of that per pupil charge. Year three, we're getting 33% of it. Year four, they've been gone for four years, and now we get no—absolutely no money based on their enrollment in the Lowell Public Schools. So is what I'm hearing that that goes in the opposite direction as well? That when a child comes back into our district, the first year, we get—there's no difference. The second year, we're getting 33% of their per pupil cost, up to 66, then to 100. Is that what you're explaining?
That's my understanding of how that funding—again, the funding formula going in this direction, at such speaks numbers, new charter territory. I am not an expert on the charter school funding formulas.
No.
So I just point a clarification. That's my understanding of what we've been told.
Mm-hmm.
I just hope I'm interpreting right.
And it's going per individual student? I mean, it's not kinda—I mean, it would seem that if you have 20 leaving and 20 coming back, they might cancel each other out, but if you're using this specific formula, it needs to track per child.
That is my understanding as well.
Yeah, so they—even the charter schools submit information through like the October 1st Sims Count, so it's actually targeted to the specific child.
To that student number that tracks.
Student ID number.
Wherever they go.
And we do know this money is coming to the city. It's just—we need to confirm that, in fact, they're enrolling here, not another charter.
Mm-hmm. My final question is, so when the charter school is doing its budget, and they're getting their foundation formula and all that's happening, and they're getting this first, that, you know, in year one, where we keep that full freight for the student, they're still getting money for that student?
And—
From a different line item.
Yeah, and I don't—exactly, no, no, we don't—
I mean, they're not taking students for free.
No, but I'm not sure, Mr. Lang, if you know or not, because your point raises an interesting question, Ms. Martin, with regards to the startup costs of these schools.
Right.
So these children weren't in front of them on the first day of school in October.
Exactly.
So to your point, it must be another—again, I apologize.
Allocation or something.
I don't really know the charter school funding formulas, but they obviously have another line item that funds the upstart, because as we've been told, because of the passage of the law in January, Lowell has been named specifically, as well as Springfield and Boston, for—ready for expansion for charter schools. So these schools can come and set up, but it's gotta be from another pool of money.
Exactly. Just my one final point. I—you know, I'd just like to say that I do think it's recognizing the environment we're functioning in right now, here in Lowell, and really specifically at the State House. I think it is remarkable that this movement happened. I think it happened at a time when there was incredible jockeying going on, working with the governor's office, working certainly in both, you know, houses of legislature. For our Lowell problem to have been addressed, you know, I'm pleased that we got this level of support, and I can understand that this has been the established percentage. The way things have gone, we've basically been given a one-year head start.
That's correct.
That no one else has ever gotten.
That's correct.
So I'm very appreciative for that, and I think we all—you know, as we're moving forward, we're gonna be learning more and more about charter school funding.
Thank you. Any other comments on the reports? Motion to approve all eight reports of the superintendent by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose to vote. On the new business, we have a proposal for Vision Van. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. If I could ask Assistant Superintendent Murphy to go over this particular proposal?
We have been invited by the New England—I Institute, which is the clinical affiliate of the New England College of Optometry. Based on the work that we were able to do with the self-refraction study, they have invited us to partner with them and enter into— invited us to partner with them and enter into an MOU so that a vision van can come into our schools and in a similar protocol as our dental program for students who have mass health, students who have private insurance, if they want to access the optometrist, they will have a complete eye exam. If a prescription for lenses is required, that prescription will be given to them. For students who have mass health, those, the glasses can be selected and they will be ordered and then returned to the school for the child. It's a wonderful opportunity. It's something that I know many, many of you have been asking for and have asking, have been asking me to look into to add another piece of health services for our students. I have provided City Solicitor Christine O'Connor with a copy of a proposed MOU and I've asked her to review it, hoping that you would approve, giving us permission to enter into an MOU. Christine has looked through it. She has a couple of comments that we're still working through, but if you do give approval for us to go forward with this, we will iron out the differences in the MOU and hopefully get this started for September.
Ms. Doherty?
Motion to approve, to accept the recommendation?
To approve the memorandum of understanding with New England Eye Institute, second by Ms. Martin. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Lariva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
And the second item under new business, the school committee bullying policy in handbook language. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, again, I'll defer to Assistant Superintendent Murphy.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Mayor, we're going to need to suspend the rules.
Okay, motion by Mr. Conway, second by Mr. Leahy to waive Rule 5, is it? Mr. Leahy, to go beyond 10 o'clock to waive Rule 5. All those in favor of waiving the appropriate rule indicate by saying aye. Oppose, to vote. Thank you, Mr. Conway. Madam, oh, I'm sorry, Assistant Superintendent Murphy?
This year, the legislature passed the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2010, which is the law that specifically addresses bullying and harassment. And there are components to the law that we need to comply with and the first one of which is to develop a school committee policy, a district policy that addresses bullying and harassment. So, I have before you two documents. The first one is listed as file JICFB, which is titled Bullying in Schools and that would be a proposed policy, school committee policy on bullying and harassment. The legal services have, has drafted this and it is in complete compliance with the law. That is the first piece in complying with the law is to have a school committee policy. The second piece is to have specific language in a student handbook. Earlier this evening, you approved the Lowell High School Handbook and when we had the subcommittee meeting, I informed subcommittee members that we were waiting to get some guidelines from ESE regarding language for handbooks. We now have that and so the second document before you is that language that would be incorporated into all of our student handbooks, the high school and the K8 student handbooks. So, I'm requesting approval of the two documents. The first is the school committee policy titled Bullying in Schools and the second is the student handbook language titled Harassment and Bullying.
Thank you.
Two separate motions, Mr. Conway.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to, a motion to approve the bullying school filed JICFB as the school committee policy, second by Mr. Leahy. Any discussion?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Lariva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
And the second document entitled Harassment and Bullying will be incorporated into our student handbooks. Motion by Ms. Doherty, second by Ms. Lariva. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Lariva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any convention and conference requests this evening. Under communications, we have a thank you note from the family of Edward P. Jeszak. Dear Dr. Scott, thank you so much for your very kind expression of sympathy. My family and I deeply appreciate the moment of silence in memory of my father. Sincerely, Joanne George. Accept the communication. Place in a file by Ms. Lariva, second by Mr. Leahy. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Oppose, to vote. Again, to remind the viewing audience that LTC on Channel 10 broadcasts committee meetings live on the first and third Wednesday during our regular session and then Thursdays at 6:00 p.m., Saturdays and Sundays at 2:00 p.m. and Tuesdays at 10:00 a.m. Under professional personnel, the members of SEIU Clerical Unit hereby request to donate sick leave days to the following employees. Anita Verdi, Special Education Department Clerk, eight days. We have a communication in the file, motion to approve by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Leary. Roll call.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Milonazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Lariva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
No, Ms. Lariva?
I just wanted to follow up on a note from the superintendent in her communication to us that she's going to be away on holiday from July 23rd to August 2nd. And while I appreciate that she said, "Please feel free to call me anytime," I feel everyone deserves a vacation, so I just want to confirm that Deputy Superintendent Franco would be our go-to person in your absence.
That is my understanding that she's planning to be at work during that time period, but if something came up that she couldn't attend, Assistant Superintendent Lang will be here.
Okay. Have a great vacation.
Anything else? Motion by Mr. Leary, second by Ms. Doherty, that we stand adjourned. Thank you all.